Board of County Commissioners meeting to order. I will note that all five commissioners are present and a quorum is established. My name is Amy Bergens. I am the clerk treasurer and I will be starting the meeting until a chair and vice chair have been elected. Let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance if everyone can join me in standing. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We will now move on to public comments. Public comment cards and comments left on the county's website prior to the board meeting have been compiled and made a part of the supporting materials that have been provided to the county commissioners and public for review. Only two periods of public comment will be taken during this meeting. Once at the beginning of the board meeting and again at the end of the meeting. Public comment will not be taken on each agenda item. Public comment is limited to three minutes once a public comment period has been opened. Public comment will be heard by leaving a voice message on Douglas County Public Comment phone line 775-783-6007. No more than one voice message, public comment per person will be played during each public comment period. Douglas County's Public Comment phone line became available to take public comment at 1:00 PM. Public comment will remain open for at least five minutes to allow members of the public to call or until the last caller has finished leaving a voice message on the county's Public Comment phone line. The board wants to encourage the respectful consideration of all views by members of the public. If the content of any voicemail is willfully disruptive of the meeting by being irrelevant, repetitious, slanderous, offensive, inflammatory, irrational, or amounts to a personal attack or interfering with the rights of others, the voice message will be skipped to the next public comment. At this time, public comment will be taken on those items that are within the jurisdiction and control of the Board of County Commissioners. I will note the time is 1:02 PM. Natalie, do we have any public comments?
Natalie Wood for the record. Yes, we do, and I will start playing them.
Ellie Waller, W A L L E R. As we begin the new year, the county manager, the DA, whomever is making the ultimate decision must reconsider his/her choice to keep meetings at bay on Zoom. County staff is starting to meet with people in person. County activities continue to open up, et cetera. Today, this new board must accept that the current process lacks transparency and the ability for the public input to be comprehensive and participative. Simply seeing we can provide written detailed comments is not enough. The previous process allowed us to comment on each item as it came up on the agenda. Even if the process remains in Zoom form for a period of time, the public should be given the opportunity to weigh in online during the meeting as each agenda item is heard. Giving us three minutes at the beginning and the end of each meeting is ludicrous and cannot be considered an equitable representation for public input. As we begin the new year, I'm securely hopeful that the new board will take the time to study staff findings in more detail and determine that not all recommendations for new developments is appropriate due to lack of definitive findings, not just the developer's interpretation and definition of findings. The master plan was a tumultuous process that lacked transparency and did not accomplish the incentive to re-public input. The planning commissioners did not take into account detailed public input. Little to no acknowledgement came from the planning commissioners or input that we made. They did do a much better job at review than the previous Board of Commissioners, right down to quite astounding. We only took one day to approve the master plan. Thank you.
Okay, next.
Jim Slade, S L A D E. Happy New Year to everyone. Welcome to our new clerk treasurer. You have big shoes to fill, but I'm sure you'll do a good job. And welcome to our three new county commissioners. I hope and trust that you will always strive to do what is best for all residents of Douglas County. Not just those who supported you or voted for you or donated to your campaign. You were elected to serve all the citizens of Douglas County. I'm glad to see that the board with three new members is getting its ethics and open meeting law training on day one. On ethics, when it comes to potential conflicts with interests, imagine that the executive director will remind you of the phrase that I have heard before. Disclose always, refuse infrequently, for something to that effect. I believe in the interest of transparency, that should include the advice to commissioners to disclose any substantial campaign contributions. Any item comes before the board that involves individuals, businesses, or entities that have made significant campaign contributions to a commissioner. By fully disclosing those contributions, the commissioner would have a more credible case for not needing to recuse. An open meeting law is up to the office of the district attorney as well as the county manager to make sure that agendas and board actions are in full compliance with the OML. And then, however, it is up to the board to make sure that you comply fully with the letter and intent of the OML. The deputy DA Richie will hopefully advise you, the OML manual under section 12.03 Standards of Interpretation states, quote, "A statute acted for the public benefit, such as a sunshine or public meeting law, should be construed liberally in favor of the public." And that, quote, "The open meeting law is entitled to a broad interpretation to promote openness in government," unquote. The public expects that county commissioners and our district's attorney's representative will carefully consider this regarding all agenda items and board actions in order to make sure that they conform both to the letter and intent of the open meeting law. Thank you.
Okay, next.
Hello, my name is Megan Kelly, M E G H A N K E L L Y. I live in Stateline, Nevada, and I'm calling today as the district manager for the Nevada Tahoe Conservation District. For the past four years, Dave Nelson serves on our Board of Supervisors as the Douglas County appointee. Our district accomplished many wonderful conservation projects within Douglas County in Big Tahoe during the years he served, including the Brodovich SUV restoration and park rehabilitation and stormwater and drainage projects on Cale Drive, at Zephyr Cove, and at Pittman Terrace. I'm calling to express the district's gratitude for his service. His attendance was impeccable and he made many valuable contributions at the meeting, at all of the meetings. Congratulations to all the newly elected DOCC members. We welcome whoever is appointed to our board, but I wanted to take a moment to give commissioners background on our conservation districts. Conservation districts are non-regulatory subdivisions of state government and are unique locally-led conservation agencies with both elected and appointed board members. Our district provides resource management and technical assistance to landowners and occupiers, and we work cooperatively with federal, state, and local governments to deliver conservation programs and projects. We look forward to a continued productive and efficient relationship with Douglas County and are ready to welcome the new board member at our first meeting of the year on January 19th. We have a lot of great projects coming up over the next four years, and we're continuing to work on a complete street design at Cale Drive, some restoration in Raid Meadow, some help for Marla Bay, Heine Wild, and the Zephyr Heights drainage issues. So if any of that interests you, you'd be an ideal board member for us. So if you need any more information, check out nttv.org or email me at mckelly, M K E L L Y, at nttv.org. Thank you so much for your time and Happy New Year.
Okay, that was the last public comment received. It came in at 1:05 PM.
Thank you, Natalie. I will note the time is 1:09 PM. So I will, at this time, close public comment and we will move on to approval of the agenda. For possible action. Approval of proposed agenda. The Board of Commissioners reserves the right to take items in a different order to accomplish business in a most efficient manner, to combine two or more agenda items for consideration, and to remove items from the agenda or delay discussion relating to items on the agenda. I will note that Commissioner Ingles has noted that he would like to remove item number five from the agenda. If one of the commissioners would like to move forward with making a motion to approve the agenda minus item number five.
This is Amy, Ms. Bergens, Mark Gardner.
Yes.
Anyways, I know that Patrick Kates more than likely put in a tremendous amount of time preparing item five. However, I did not receive any of the supporting documents in the agenda package, so I have not been able to review any of those and would like more time. So I would concur with Commissioner Ingles and ask that item five be taken off the agenda for today and rescheduled for a later meeting. So I'll make a motion to that effect.
Thank you, Commissioner Gardner. Can... I will defer to the district attorney, but could you possibly phrase that as approval of the agenda minus agenda item number five?
I will do that, yes. I move for the approval of the agenda minus item number five for later discussion at a board meeting to be determined.
Second.
Okay, so we have Commissioner Gardner has moved approval of the agenda minus item number five, and Commissioner Ingles has seconded. All those, is there discussion? Seeing no discussion, I will call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Commissioner Noah Sad, just to confirm that that was an aye for approval or?
It's an aye for approval.
Okay, then it looks like we have a five to zero vote in favor of approving the agenda minus agenda item number five. So from there, we're going to move on to the agenda item that I've been waiting for, which is for possible action. Discussion on the election of the chairman and vice chairman of the Board of County Commissioners in compliance with NRS 244.070 and County Code 2.04. And there are two directions that the commissioners can take. You can either do both the chair and the vice chair at the same time in one vote, or you can take them separately, but I will defer to the commissioners as to how you want to proceed. Commissioner Noah Sad?
Yes, I nominate John Ingles as the chair.
Well, are we doing both together? Are we doing one at a time? I thought we were discussing that first.
Commissioner Gardner?
Okay, I will, I will make a motion to amend that motion to select Commissioner John Ingles as chair and to also select Commissioner Walt Noah Sad as chair.
So we are already moving forward with both because, again, I haven't heard any motion to do both together as opposed to one.
I'm making that motion now, Mr. Tarkanian.
Well, you're making names. You're not making, you're not making the direction of which way to go.
Okay, and I'll restate my motion then, okay? Mr. Noah Sad, I guess I'm making an amendment to your motion, am I, am I not?
Well, I thought I was doing a single nomination, otherwise I would have nominated both myself and Mr. Ingles or you and Mr. Rice. I would have done that since I mentioned only one name. I think it's rather obvious what we did, what I did.
Okay.
So are we going with both together or one? Because that dictates the way I want to make a motion. So I'm just trying to figure out. I'm not trying to be difficult here. I know we've got a long date in front of us. I'm just trying to figure out which direction we're going. Are we going with both names together? We go with one at a time and then I'll make a motion?
Commissioner Gardner, I saw your hand.
Yes, I believe that after Mr. Noah Sad made the motion to nominate Mr. Ingles as chair, I amended that motion to name Commissioner Noah Sad as vice chair. So I will, in compliance with NRS 244.070 and County Code 2.04, I would amend that motion, as I said, to also name Commissioner Walt Noah Sad as vice chair.
Okay, now can I make a motion now? We wait for a second. Again, this is all new to me, so I'm asking for some direction.
At this point, I think that I would defer to District Attorney Doug Ritchie for some help.
Thank you, Ms. Bergens. Doug Ritchie with the Douglas County District Attorney's Office. Implicit in the motion and as amended, it's being proposed that the commissioners consider the nomination and election of a chair and vice chair at the same time. There is a first and there's a second with the amendment. The practice has been is that there will be discussion and then Commissioner Tarkanian can bring up an alternative and perhaps an amendment. Clear, as Ms. Bergens indicated initially, the board can handle this however they wish. They can do it chair and vice chair or collectively as a, together. Hopefully that's, that clarifies your question, Commissioner Tarkanian.
Okay, so we're gonna have discussion now first and then later I make a counter motion.
Has the motion been seconded?
Second.
Okay.
I apologize, but I feel like we need to take a step back and I'm a bit confused as to where we're at. Are we taking the chair and vice chair at the same time? That was the initial question that we were posing. So what is the will of the commissioners?
Let's take them both together.
Yeah, that was my amendment that was seconded is to take both of them together. And I believe now the amendment should be under discussion. Am I not correct, Mr. Ritchie?
Ms. Bergens, if I may. Doug Ritchie, that's correct, Mr. Gardner. Discussion on the motion as amended and seconded by Commissioner Ingles.
Well, I'll make a couple of comments and then I guess I can either, depending what protocol is, either make a separate motion or I don't know how that works. But, you know, I know that this board was very divided and contentious in the last session. I know that the elections were also very contentious and I know there's a lot of divisiveness there. I think it's very important that this board comes together and works together to facilitate the best interest of Douglas County. I also believe that with three new board members, it's important to have people on the board that have experience, that have, one, experience on the board, and two, experience being a chairman. I was gonna nominate, and if I, that's my approach right now, I was gonna nominate Wes Rice as a chairman. Wes has been the chairman of the GOP State Rural Caucus for 15 years. He's got great experience in running boards. He's also been on the board and I was gonna nominate John Ingles as a vice chair. Those two have seniority. They've been on the board before and I think that would be the best approach for all involved. I could either make that as a motion or that's my talking points and then I don't know how we go from here, Mr. Ritchie.
Call for a vote.
If I may, Ms. Bergens, call if there's any further discussion and then you can call for the vote.
Okay, is there any further discussion between the commissioners? Seeing none, right now we have a motion on the table for the chairman to be Commissioner Ingles and the vice chair to be Commissioner Noah Sad. All those in favor say aye.
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 And those opposed?
No.
No.
So the vote is three to two and so the motion carries. Congratulations Chairman Ingles and Vice Chairman Noah Sad. And at this point, I will hand the Zoom meeting over to Commissioner Ingles or Chairman Ingles. Would you like to take a break prior to starting?
No, it's gonna be a long day, Amy.
Okay, congratulations.
Thank you. I appreciate the confidence you have extended to me. And this old artillery commander promises to have a commission that can be called the No Moonlight on a Shovel Commission. So let's commence and we'll start with the second agenda item. Is everybody prepared to go?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, for possible action, discussion on the election of the chair of the liquor board in compliance with the NRS 244.350. So one of us is gonna be on the liquor board. Who likes Jim Beam?
Chairman?
Yeah, go ahead, Dan.
So I think in the, in the past, traditionally we've had the chairman of the Board of County Commissioners also be the chairman of the liquor board. So I would move that we continue that and have Commissioner Ingles just be the chairman of the liquor board.
Do we hear a second?
I'll second that. Okay.
Call for the vote. This is to nominate the chair as the representative for the liquor board. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Good. All right, moving on. Number three, for presentation only. Nevada Ethics and Government Law Training will be provided by the Executive Director of the Nevada Commission of Ethics, Yvonne Navaras Goodson. Did I say that right? She here?
Chairman Ingles, Natalie Wood for the record. Yvonne is not gonna be available until a little after 2:00 PM. So Doug Ritchie had been okay with moving those agenda items if you would be so to move.
Okay, we'll, we'll move on and bring this back up later. Item number four. This is Mr. Ritchie. I see you're here. For presentation only, training of the Nevada Open Meeting Law by District Attorney, the District Attorney's Office. Mr. Ritchie, go ahead.
Thank you so much, Chairman. Doug Ritchie with the District Attorney's Office. It's funny that you should ask if everyone's nervous. No matter how many times I get this presentation, I'm always a little nervous, particularly now since I'm trying to figure out how to do a PowerPoint. Yeah, Zoom. Can you see that? All right, one second. Let me see if I can get this again. So can you see the screen now?
Can see it, but it's not in presentation mode.
Hmm. There you go. I know. Appreciate your indulgence. The practice is beforehand, and of course, it never works quite the same.
Mr. Ritchie, Mr. Ritch, if I may, is that the badge that you carry from the DA's office?
It sure is.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, all the deputies have that badge. Um, I appreciate the opportunity to address this Board of County Commissioners and any other elected officials who may be watching today. Again, I appreciate your willingness to serve the people. It's important to realize that liberties of the people never were nor ever will be secure when the transactions of their rulers may be concealed from them. That's from Patrick Hendry. The legislative intent of NRS Chapter 241, which is Nevada's open meeting law, is that all public bodies exist to aid in the conduct of the people's business. It is the intent of the law that their actions be taken openly and that deliberations be conducted openly. I thought I would, there's a lot to cover. There's been changes in the Nevada law as well as changes that occurred due to Governor Sisalak's emergency directives. So I thought I'd start with some basics to begin with. What is a public body? A public body is any administrative, advisory, executive, or legislative body of the state or local government that expends or disperses tax revenue or is supported in whole or in part by tax revenue. So basically, if you're spending the people's money, you need to do their business in public. Now, of course, the natural thing might be, well, can we avoid the open meeting law by delegating authority to like a Blue Urban Commission, a task force, a subcommittee to kind of get around the open meeting law? And of course, the answer is no. A public body cannot avoid the open meeting law by delegating its authority to someone else or some other body. Recent changes in the law kind of clarified this. A subcommittee or working group consisting of at least two persons who are appointed by the public body are subject to the open meeting law if a majority of the subcommittee are members or staff members of the public body or the subcommittee is authorized to make a recommendation to the public body for the public body to take any action. So what that means as a practical matter is that if a majority of the members of this, of a task force are members of the public body, like the county commissioners or staff members, then they are subject to the open meeting law. Now, I will clarify that staff members that might be supporting this task force don't count when you're calculating the majority. It's only voting members, actual members. So for instance, if the county manager's office helps set up the meeting or coordinate agendas, they don't count. Also, even if these are, let's say, it's completely composed of members of the public, it's a citizen task force, they are still subject to open law if they've been empowered to make a recommendation directly to the body, the public body for action. The key question is, has the public body delegated de facto authority to the committee or that advisory panel to act on its behalf? It does not matter what committee it's called. The question is, is it acting on behalf of the public body with its authority? The next thing I want to go to is serial meetings, serial communications. It's a real problematic, problematic area for public officials. It's easy to violate the open meeting law without really intending to. Under open meeting law, a meeting means a gathering of members of a public body at which a quorum is present to deliberate toward a decision or to take action on any matter over which that body has supervision, control, jurisdiction, or advisory power. It also means a meeting, a series of meetings where in any one meeting there's less than a quorum present. The members of the public body attending one or more of the gatherings collectively constitute a quorum and a series of gatherings were held with the specific intent to avoid the OML. So basically, what they're getting at is that even if not a majority of you are together, if you have a series of meetings where you end up collectively being a quorum, you're gonna violate the open meeting law. The easiest way I remember this is, many of you probably remember Three Dog Night. It's a group from way back when. They had a song, "One is the loneliest number." The song goes, "One is the loneliest number. Two can be as bad as one. It's almost as bad as, it's almost as lonely as the number one." If one or two officials are meeting together, they are powerless to set policies, to direct staff, or to otherwise deliberate or act. There must be a quorum to take action and to violate the open meeting law. So if one or two of you get together to talk about business, things you think should happen, you're not violating the open meeting law because you haven't formed a quorum. So what is considered taking action under the open meeting law? It's a decision made by a majority of the members of the elected body. It's a commitment or promise made by a majority of the members. And of course, it's a vote taken by the majority. It's important to note that action doesn't necessarily involve a vote. If you've decided to do something, that is considered action. Now, what does it mean to deliberate? From NRS, deliberate means collectively, meaning as a group, a quorum, to examine, weigh, and reflect upon the reasons for or against a proposed action. The term includes without limitation the collective discussion or exchange of facts preliminary to the ultimate decision. And again, that's important too, that you're collecting information that's gonna lead you to take action. There's a couple of simple elements to kind of keep this straight. Do not come together as a quorum to discuss business unless a, unless at a public meeting that has been properly noticed and agendized. To deliberate toward a decision or to take action on a matter, the board has supervision, control, jurisdiction, or advisory power. If you have a, if you want to get together and talk about the Oakland Raiders or the weather, you can do that all day long. It's only when you meet together as a quorum, a majority, to discuss something over which you have control or advisory power that the OML is triggered. So I'll give you a little scenario here. What if trustee JD meets with trustee Eric to discuss an opening, an upcoming agenda item, and tells him it's a very bad idea? Has there been a violation of open meeting law? Of course, the answer is no. Two members of a five-member board do not constitute a quorum, cannot deliberate or take action, and therefore cannot violate the open meeting law. What if JD then meets with trustee Patrick, tells him what he and Eric discussed, and confirms that the three of them will vote against the upcoming agenda item? Yes, that you now have three, even though you all didn't meet together. It is a violation because it's what's called a walking quorum. There were deliberations and a de facto vote on an upcoming agenda item. And as we go through, if anyone has a question, just speak up and I'll, I'll be happy to answer any questions. There is an exception for seminars, conferences, and workshops. Under an open meeting law opinion by the Attorney General's Office, unless the facts show that a quorum of the board has deliberated and taken action, attendance at seminars, conferences, and workshops do not fall under the definition of a meeting found in the law, even if the presentations touch on subjects within the scope of the board's jurisdiction. For example, this board has control over water and sewer. If a majority of the board went to, say, a water conference to learn about water law, rate setting, public policy initiatives, that would not be a violation of open meeting law. Now, if a majority, you know, during social hour decided to sit down, have a drink, and discuss what the new water rate should be, and you decide what you want to do, that would be a violation of open meeting law because now you're outside of that seminars, conferences, and workshop exemption, you're actually starting to set policy. The same thing applies to social gatherings. You're engaged individuals, you care about the public. You'll probably be invited to many ribbon-cutting ceremonies, grand openings, events where you kiss babies. You're going to be out in the public, and a majority of you may be there, and that's okay, it's exempted under this open meeting law. However, it's important that you do not attempt to circumvent, circumvent the law by deliberating over issues over which the board has jurisdiction and control using the social gathering or conferences as a pretext for a meeting. Again, the idea is that the, the people's business should be conducted in the open so they understand what you're doing. Here's another scenario for you. Four members of the Clark County Board of County Commissioners, there's seven, so four of seven, belong to a social group known as Housing Opportunities for the Public, HOPE, that encourages developers to include affordable housing in any new developments within Clark County. HOPE members meet informally each week at a local bakery and communicate regularly with each other through Nextdoor, a social media platform. All four commissioners have publicly stated at HOPE meetings that they support HOPE's policies and will support any development that includes at least 40% affordable housing, whatever that means. HOPE members are excited about a new multi-use development that has more than 60% affordable housing. An upcoming agenda item involves an application by this developer, and the four commissioners have told the members of HOPE and each other through Nextdoor that they will definitely vote for the project. Based on what you've learned so far, do you think there are any problems with these social communications? The answer is yes. Due to the nature of social media, there has been a violation of open meeting law. Social media has been defined as the collective sharing of online communications dedicated to community-based input, interaction, content sharing, collaboration. As a social media platform, the intent of the medium is to publicly share messages to its members as an avenue for communication. Its whole intent is to share communication and ideas. In this example, a quorum of the Clark County Commissioners are members of a social media platform, Nextdoor, and rarely use it to communicate with each other and the other members of HOPE. Any serial communication or a walking quorum is prohibited as it is considered collective deliberation by the board members toward a decision. The same thing could apply to, if they all were members, say, of the Clark County Democratic Central Committee. Obviously, it's a political entity, and issues of public importance are probably discussed at their Clark County Central Committee meetings. That, it's very careful therefore that if they are meeting and there's a quorum present, they'd be very careful about what they discuss. Probably the best practice is to avoid any kind of quorum where there's a majority of you at any kind of event where the likely topic is political over topics over which you may ultimately have jurisdiction and control. Another scenario that often comes up is what if the county manager or staff meets with two groups of two county commissioners separately and privately to brief them on upcoming agenda items? Is this a violation of open meeting law? The answer is no. The Supreme Court, Nevada Supreme Court has held that the briefings of less than a quorum of the public body by staff do not violate the open meeting law as long as there's no deliberation by those being briefed, and the members will not poll as to how they will vote. In other words, it's truly staff talking to the commissioners or trustees, in the case of the GID. Again, members of a public body may individually discuss matters with staff because the open meeting law only prohibits collective deliberations or actions where quorum is present. It's a Nevada Supreme Court case. So what if one of the commissioners repeats her private conversations during these one-on-one meetings with the other board members to convince them to vote a certain way? Is there a violation? Yes, if you've got one member that has received information, there's no violation there. But once she or he starts talking to the other members, and there's a quorum, a collective quorum, it's a walking quorum, it's prohibited, it's considered collective deliberation by the board towards a decision. And this is a Board of Regents case. Here's another issue that can come up. The Douglas County has had this issue arise recently. What if Patrick sends a mass email to the other board members asking them to vote in favor of an upcoming development project and explains why he is voting in favor? Is this a possible violation of open meeting law? Yes, it is. This could be a serial communication that involves a quorum once one or two other members respond. All the members of the board now know how Patrick will vote, why they should vote in favor of the project, at least according to Patrick. Please do not send emails or reply to all on your email communications. The county manager's office, the clerk's office has sent out kind of guidance on email communications. Try not to ever respond to a group email and keep your communications one-on-one. Electronic communications is becoming, it's an ongoing problem, according to the Attorney General. And the Attorney General's Office has become concerned about the use of electronic devices during public meetings. It's a little awkward for us to have this discussion now since we're all meeting electronically remotely. The issue is because all deliberations must appear in a public forum. Privately texting or emailing messages to other commissioners during a meeting or sharing information via social media outside of the public's view will likely be considered a violation of the law. Again, it's the people's business. They need to understand the discussions that you're having, the information you're receiving, the thoughts that you're having that lead you to vote the way you do. I'm sure you want them to understand why you take the positions you do, the information that you're considering. And when you text, you privately text one another, even if it's not a quorum, or if you're having social media contacts outside of the public's view, you're perhaps, you're preventing the public from seeing why you're doing what you're doing, or the reasons why you're voting the way you want. Another issue related to open meeting laws, all public officials should be extremely cautious about committing how you will vote until you've heard all the evidence presented to you at a public hearing. Let us assume the developer tells staff that he has received enough votes to get the project through before staff has made a recommendation or a public hearing has even occurred. Such commitments not only deny the public a right to be heard, but also exposes the board allegations that they have violated the open meeting law. It can also be potentially embarrassing when, after you hear all the facts, you have to change your mind and do not support the project. Just don't do it. Don't commit to anything until there's a public hearing so the public can hear all the same information you are, and they can understand why you're doing what you're doing. There's nothing in the open meeting law that prohibits a board member from meeting with members of the public to receive feedback and information about an upcoming agenda item. However, you should consult with staff to inform them of what you have learned prior to the board meeting so that the information can be presented to all the board members and to the public. Again, if you feel it's important and it's relevant information, you should share it with not only your fellow commissioners, but with the public. By informing the staff, they can get it on the agenda and get the supporting material on there so everybody can know what you're doing, what you're considering, and why you're considering it. The Nevada Supreme Court has stated, "We have acknowledged that the open meeting law is not intended to prove that every private discussion of a public issue. Instead, the open meeting law only prohibits collective deliberations or actions where quorum is present." Does anyone have any questions about walking quorums, meetings, discussions?
Doug?
Yes, Chairman?
So if a commissioner decides to have a town hall meeting and, for the public, to talk about whatever, and a couple of other commissioners are there, could that be considered a quorum?
That's an excellent question, Chairman. If there's a majority there, there is a quorum. The next issue then is, are you discussing issues of public importance? My guess is if one commissioner felt it was important enough to hold a town hall, then it probably is an issue over which you have not only significant public interest, but it's over something that this board has jurisdiction and control over. So again, if you're going to have a town hall, it's advisable that less than a quorum of you attend that town hall unless you're going to agendize it and make it, you know, make it available to everybody and agendize it, and everybody knows that they can come and attend.
Okay, thank you.
But that's a great question.
Mr. Ritchie, I, I have several questions regarding, this Mark Gardner, the record, I have several questions regarding OML, but I, I will, I want to delay those questions until you're done with your presentation. So I don't know if you are done with your presentation or you were just asking for questions leading up to this particular portion of your presentation.
Thank you, Commissioner Gardner. Attorneys are notoriously long-winded, and there's a lot of information to cover. I will try and speed through this so we can have some question, question answered here at the end.
Okay, I'll wait until the end, then. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Just some basic rules. Except in an emergency, written notice fall meetings must be given by 9:00 a.m., at least three business, at least three days before the meeting. Agenda topics must be clear and complete to alert the public to the specific matters that will be discussed by the board. If action might be taken by the board, the item must be designated, quote, "for possible action," unquote, on the agenda. The agenda should also state that the agenda item may be combined, taken out of order, or removed. And you must also notify the public if there's any restrictions on public comment, including when it will be allowed. This is something I found, it's one of my favorite examples.
Hey, I'm in a meeting right now.
Oh, I thought you were at home.
No, I'm in the meeting.
Okay.
"An unnamed committee of unknown members will apparently be tasked with yet-to-be-determined duties regarding unspecified actions of the Sarasota Police Department for an undetermined period of time under the guidance of an unknown law enforcement consultant." That's from the Islander Reporter in Florida. The agenda must be clear and complete, and a higher degree of specificity is needed if an agenda item is of significant interest to the public. Which makes sense. If it has a lot of interest in the public, then the agenda should be clear enough so that people know that, oh, the board's going to talk about something I'm interested in. There is an inherent conflict between clear and complete. A complete agenda would include everything in the background, supporting materials, but it would not be clear. It's almost like an attorney trick where you put so much stuff in the boilerplate that the, the heart of the matter is, is lost in all the, in all the words. I will give you some pointers, and the Open Meeting Law Manual has some great examples as well. But for instance, if there's a contract, it should identify the parties, and if you know what the amount of the contract is, you should identify that. You should also identify the project. For instance, we're going to resurface Mueller Lane, and it's going to cost $50,000, and it's with XYZ Company. The Attorney General uses a reasonableness, a reasonableness standard when evaluating the clear and complete standard. And of course, what is reasonable is fact-specific. I will note that the Attorney General's Open Meeting Law Task Force and the Attorney General has noted an increase in open meeting law complaints that appear to be agenda-driven. In other words, it's the, the public policy decisions that the, that the boards are making that are driving the complaints, not so much the fact that an agenda isn't necessarily clear or complete, or there's some other deficiency, but rather, it's members of the public that disagree with the policy decisions of the board. That's something that every board should be cognizant of. Usually, there's two sides to every story, and someone's going to be upset. And so it's very important that you put yourself in the shoes of the party that perhaps you're not necessarily agreeing with so that you understand where they're coming from and have agenda items that are, that have information that would help them know, one, you're talking about something they care very deeply about, and what the scope of the discussion will be. Again, the importance, it's very important. Make the agenda topics clear and then stick to the agenda. Please do not wander from the scope of the topic contained in the title of an agenda. Also, minutes must be kept at every meeting, it must reflect the date, time, and place of the meeting, the members who are present and absent, the substance of all matters proposed, discussed, or decided, the substance of any remarks made by the public or a copy of his or her prepared written statements. Which leads me to notice. Notice is very important in the open meeting law. The open meeting law requires that notice, the agenda must be posted at the principal office of the public body and no less than three other separate prominent places within the public body's jurisdiction. It also must be posted on the public body's website and the state of Nevada's public notice website. And also, written notice must also be mailed at no charge to anyone who has requested a copy by no later than 9:00 a.m. of the third working day before the scheduled meeting. So that's the notice that's required under the open meeting law. However, noticing the age of COVID has changed a few things, in my mind, not for the better. Emergency Directive 6 was issued by Governor Sisalak on March 22, 2020, and remains in effect today. Section 3 of Directive 6 eliminates the requirement that notices be physically posted. The only notice that is now required is the posting of the agenda on the public body's website and the state's notice website. A common misunderstanding is to believe that a notice required under some other provision of Nevada law or local ordinance applies to NRS Chapter 241. Or local ordinance applies to NRS Chapter two forty-one, Nevada's open meeting law. The failure to provide a statutorily required notice may in fact deny someone their due process rights. Or otherwise make a public bodies act void or voidable, but it does not violate the open meeting law. The open meeting law is very specific, very specific about what notice must be provided. As further amended by Governor Sisalak's emergency directives. That leads me to uh, something's happening a lot more now, that's video conferences. Under Nevada's open meeting law, a public body may conduct a meeting via teleconference or video conference. If a quorum is actually or constructively present. And there is a physical location where members of the public may hear or observe each member attending the meeting and can participate. Well, wait a minute, that's not happening right now. That's because video conferences in the age of COVID have also been changed by Emergency Directive Six. Directive Six eliminates the requirement for a public body to designate a physical location to post the agenda. Provide supporting materials to the public, and perhaps most importantly, um, provide a location for members of the public to physically attend a meeting. Now, pursuant to Emergency Directive Thirty. Counties are authorized to impose additional COVID-nineteen-related restrictions on public activities, such as the meetings of public bodies. This body, is the Board of County Commissioners, can impose additional restrictions. But it's important to note, the public bodies may also, consistent with Governor Sisalak's emergency directives. Hold in-person meetings if proper safeguards are in place. There is no requirement that public bodies hold their meetings remotely. I'll say that again, public bodies can have their meetings in person. But they have to comply with the emergency directives issued by the government. As Jim Slade earlier indicated, um, how meetings are conducted is a policy decision for each public body. Under Nevada's open meeting law, public comment must be provided at least two opportunities. To, to share their views with not only the public, but the public body. First, prior to adjourn, first, once before any action is, uh, occurs on the meeting. In other words, the very first thing that happens at a board meeting is there's public comment period. And then there's a second public comment period, and neither occurs at the end of the meeting, or. As each action item is discussed. Again, that is also modified i- in the age of COVID under Directive Six. If a physical location is not provided for the public to attend a public body's meeting, then it must provide a means for public comments. The public comment options may include, without limitation, telephonic or email comment. I will note that public bodies have been uh satisfying this requirement of open meeting law in many different ways. Um, some have uh taken email comments, which are then read to the public body by the secretary. Um, some bodies uh take uh telephone calls. Um, the Board of County Commissioners have been taking uh voice messages and then playing them during public comment. There are many ways to handle this. Um, if I was more proficient in uh these Zoom meetings and sharing, I would share with you. The recent agenda of the Nevada Attorney General's Open Meeting Law Task Force. I'm a member of the Open Meeting Law Task Force, and on that agenda. It just states very basically that there will be an, um, that if you want to participate, you need to contact the secretary. There's a period of open public comment, and there's a period of closing public comment, and that's it. Um, yeah, that it's very basic. And again, each public body has a lot of discretion on how they will comply with open meeting law and Directive Six. But it's important that whatever the public body chooses to do, that they ensure that the public body can actually participate. For instance, it's not uh unheard of that a public body will say, you know, we'll have a meeting at this location. And then more people show up than um are allowed under the current COVID restrictions. Um, whatever the public body does, they need to make sure that the, the choice that they have made. That they can actually allow the public to participate in the method that the public board has selected. Now here's uh kind of a question that's come up, does, before taking any action. Include the public bodies approving the prior board minutes from current agenda? In other words, before taking public comment, can the board approve the agenda or through the prior minutes? The answer is, uh, yes. Um, approving the agenda is not a ministerial act, nor is uh approving the minutes. As long as an item is for possible action and requires a vote, then the board is taking action. And public comment must occur before that action is taken. Now, a question sometimes arises, can the board respond to something that was brought up during public comment? The answer is yes, board members can ask clarifying questions to the individual. They can also take action to the limited extent of requesting the staff put this issue on a future agenda for deliberation and action. The open meeting law does not require that you ignore public comments. But what if a citizen begins to make a com- a complaint about an ethical violation of a board member or other public officer? Should the board or the chairman, chairperson, allow them to continue speaking? The answer is no. Public comment should be limited to items that are under the board's jurisdiction and control. Again, that's the heart and soul of open meeting law. A quorum discussing, deliberating, or taking action on, on something that's within the board's jurisdiction and control. An alleged ethics violation is not under the board's jurisdiction and control, they need to be referred to the Ethics Commission. I will also point out under personal attacks, that under Nevada's open meeting law, any discussion regarding someone's character. Competence or alleged misconduct requires written advance notice to the individual. The open meeting law requires that. The Attorney General has also issued numerous opinions on personal attacks. A public body may lip, place limitations on caustic personal attacks made by members of the public during the public comment period. Um, again, it's both, uh, there's a federal case of the Eighth Circuit and open meeting law opinions. Here's the issue, the board should stick to policy decisions. Public comment should stick to policy decisions, not, not people, not person, but to policy decisions. If the public or the board wants to talk about the character of someone. Then under the open meeting law, they need to be adj- that issue has to be agendized, and the person needs to receive notice. The public body may not inform the public that is legally prohibited from discussing public comments, that's not true. You just can't deliberate and take action on them. Comments that are offensive, disruptive, or overly repetitive may be terminated. Comments that are critical of the public policy decisions of the public body must not be censored. Again, if we're talking about policy, you can't restrict what the public has to say. About their views on the policy decisions you're considering. However, personal attacks should not be allowed, it's policy, not people. Reasonable time limits and the enforcement of other reasonable rules and regulations to ensure the orderly conduct of the meeting are allowed. However, any rules must be clearly expressed on the agenda, in other words, the public needs to know what the rules are going into a meeting. And finally, the chairperson, Chairman Ingalls, has a discretion to allow more time. I will note that if a person willfully disrupts a meeting to the extent that it is impractical for the public body to continue its business. The person may be removed from the meeting, I mean, they may, and may be charged with a misdemeanor. It's also important to note that the chairperson of the board may, without a vote of the public body, declare recess. To remove a person who's disruptive of the meeting, which makes sense. Um, I'm aware of public meetings where organized groups have come on, come in. And they've made it so chaotic that the board can't even talk to each other, let alone vote to take a recess or take other action. The chairperson generally, under the bylaws or norms and procedures. Inherent in their role, has the ability to take a recess to ensure the, you know, the efficient and orderly conduct. Of the body's business. So any questions about these kind of basic rules or public comment? Again, I wish we were meeting in person, um, it's a lot more fun if there's an open dialogue. Um, but again, if you do have any questions, I'm happy to answer them, either now or later.
Uh, Doug, I have a question, I don't know whether it's appropriate now or for later. Um, has uh, what are the consequences of violating these open media laws?
Um, I have that later, I can skip to it if you wish, or I have a few more slides before I get to.
That's good, you're, you're getting to that, okay, thank you.
You bet. There are exceptions to the open meeting law, um, a public body may hold a closed meeting to consider the character, alleged misconduct. Professional competence or physical or mental health of the person to administer a great examination administered by the public body. To consider an appeal resulting from an examination administered by the public body. In other words, you're still subject to the open meeting law, but you don't have to have an open meeting to discuss some of this stuff. And as you see the exceptions, it, it makes sense. I will note that there's an important exception to the exception. A public body shall not hold a closed meeting to discuss the character, alleged misconduct, or professional competence of one of its members. Or in the case of the Board of County Commissioners, its uh county manager, its chief executive officer. Those must occur in a public session. In addition to the exemptions for social gatherings and educational conferences. The open meeting law exempts meetings with the public body's management representative. Involve the collective bargaining negotiations from Nevada's open meeting law. Now, I've thought a lot about this, and I, I think what the legislature intended is. They understand that public bodies have a responsibility to taxpayers, to those tax dollars. And if, if negotiations with um unions, bargaining units had to occur in public. It would really hamstring a public body's ability to negotiate. It'd be almost like in a, in a football, you're required to announce your play to the opposing team before you call the play. And so, the, this is, you know, again, the general purpose of open meeting law is that all the people's business should be occurring in public. But this is an important exception under the law. Another important exception is the attorney-client meeting exemption. NRS two forty-one point oh one five three B two specifically excludes attorney-client meetings with the board's attorney. Related to either potential or existing litigation from the requirements of the open meeting law. That is why these attorney-client meetings are sometimes called non-meetings by the Attorney General's Office and other people that practice in this area. They're excluded from the definition of a meeting under the open meeting law. So although we're clearly meeting, there may be a quorum. It's not, it doesn't fall under the definition of a meeting for purposes of the open meeting law. And again, I think the legislature didn't want to hamstring uh public bodies, they wanted to get honest advice from their counsel. The kind of the good, the bad, and the ugly of potential or existing litigation. Without uh telegraphing to the other side where we think our weaknesses may be, or where our strengths may be in a particular. Uh, litigation context. Um, going on to some more basic rules, all the minutes of, of a public body must include any written remarks. Or any other information of the general public. If the individuals request that their remarks be included in the record, this does not mean. The board chairperson must read aloud the written statement that has been submitted. In other words, the open meeting law doesn't require that uh someone who submits written public comment have that writ. Read to the public by the public body. That doesn't prevent the chair or members of the body from doing that, but it doesn't require. This, the board can simply make copies available to the public and attach any written comments to the minutes of the board meeting. Regarding supporting documentation, upon request, at least one copy of the agenda. Any proposed ordinance or regulation that will be discussed at the meeting. And any other supporting material must be provided to any person who has requested it. Again, I don't know if you noticed that, I said requested twice. If someone requests something, the public body needs to provide it. But the, but uh it doesn't require the public body create like fifty copies of supporting material on the off chance that someone may want it. Uh, particularly in our modern age where things are accessible electronically. It doesn't make sense to waste two boxes of paper on the off chance that someone may want a physical copy. The supporting material must be supplied without charge, and if requested, and it is feasible in electronic format. The supporting materials must be provided at the same time that this provides to members of the public body. And again, if the county or city's population is forty-five thousand or more, the supporting material must be posted to the NDS website. Douglas County posts all of its materials on its website. Um, just a few issues that you might be interested in. Um, can you recess, can you recess to go into a closed meeting without advance notice? Or recess to discuss an issue with your attorney? Um, yes, you can, if it's about potential existing litigation. If you have a general legal question that you do not want to discuss before the public, public and waive an attorney-client privilege. Then you must, you may ask the chairperson to call for a brief recess, in which case you can go into a attorney-client privilege meeting. Uh, again, keep in mind that during recesses, recesses, you should be cautious not to talk about business if there's a majority present. Again, you want to avoid the appearance of backroom deals, so be smart when you're, when there's a recess. If a violation occurs, and again, we're all human. Um, all of you are not experts in open meeting law, you're, you're citizens that care about the people. If you become aware during, during a meeting that open meeting law violations occurred, you, you should take steps to cure it. For instance, if there's been a proper notice of the meeting, you should convene the meeting to reschedule it and adjourn. Discussions of significance that occurred before the discovery should be repeated at the next meeting. If there's a discussion of items that are on the agenda, stop the discussion and schedule it for a future meeting. If you take action on discussion-only items, the action is void. You should reschedule. Again, if you find yourself talking about an item with a quorum during the break. You should reconvene and disclose on the record what was discussed. This has happened before, if you inadvertently talk during a break, when you go back in, disclose what happened. Now to Chairman, uh, Chairman Ingalls' question, there are individual penalties. Each member of the public body that attends a meeting in violation of open meeting law, with knowledge of the violation. Is guilty of a misdemeanor and subject to a civil penalty of five hundred dollars for the first offense, a thousand for the second. And twenty-five hundred for every subsequent offense. Collectively, any action that's taken by the public body in violation of open meeting law is void. However, any suit to declare an action void must be brought within sixty days of the alleged violation. Unless told for an additional thirty days under certain circumstances. All penalties that have an impact on individual board members and not on the board collectively require, require a showing of a willful violation. What this means is that if you get the advice of legal counsel and you follow it in good faith, it will protect you from personal liability. You will never be personally liable if you seek the advice of counsel and rely on it in good faith. Now, that doesn't mean that the action won't be void, or that the board collectively will have to take corrective action. You personally will not be subject to penalties. Any questions on this?
Doug?
Yes, sir.
Can you cite any recent examples of where this was enforced?
Um. You know, the only one that comes to mind is Pedro Martinez, the Washoe County School District. You know, the only one that comes to mind is Pedro Martinez, the Washoe County School District. Um, they met with their superintendent privately to discuss his termination or resignation in lieu of termination. Again, in that case, I don't remember, there was a ca, there was a case in court, and I don't remember if individual uh, Board of Trustees, School District Board Trustees were found liable personally. But there, the actions were found a violation of the open meeting law and the action was void.
The bar seems pretty high to actually commit a violation. And uh, is there a committee that decides on the violation, or does it go straight to the court? How does it work?
That's a great question. The bar um, for finding personal violations is quite high because um, it's a willful violation. It's a knowing violation. And I think the Attorney General and the legislature realizes you're, you're a citizen statesman. Uh, you, you aren't professionals in this. You're, you're trying to do the public's business the best way you can. I will say that as far as violations of open meeting law, I think the bar is pretty low, actually. There's uh, there are frequent open, there are opinions that issue that find violations of open meeting law. Um, there are a lot of rules. NRS chapter two forty-one is actually quite short, but there's a lot of uh, open meeting law opinions. There's court cases. And it's, it's easy to run afoul of the open meeting law if you're not careful. But again, I don't want to be negative. The positive thing is that for a willful violation, you've got to really be trying to violate the law. You've got to willfully knowingly violate open meeting law. As far as the process, um, the second part of your question, uh, the Attorney General's Office uh, complaints can be filed with them. They have staff that review all open meeting law complaints. Um, they, as I said, there's a extensive body of prior opinions, legal opinions, case law that they refer to as they examine complaints. Um, as I may, may have mentioned earlier, the Attorney General has noted a sharp increase in um, open meeting law complaints that appear to be policy-driven rather than uh, open meeting law violation like third and complete um, failure to provide a notice, things of that sort. It's a good question.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions? Let me conclude. We'll have like a question-answer session. The goal is in requiring deliberations take place at meetings that are open to public is that committee members make conscientious effort to hear viewpoints on each issue so that the community can understand on what their premises are based, add to those premises when necessary, and intelligently evaluate and participate in the process of government. My hope is that people may disagree with the policy decisions that you may make or other public bodies may make. But my hope is that they will respect that you are following open meeting law, that you're publicly discussing these issues, that you're willing to listen to public input, and that no matter how the vote ends up, the public feel they were able to participate in that process, and that you made the best decision you could based on the information that was available to you. Again, many of you that serve on public bodies do so without compensation. Those of you that do receive compensation isn't, it isn't nearly enough. And so I appreciate your willingness to serve, and I hope the public will appreciate your efforts to do their business in a transparent and open manner. And with that, I'm open for any discussions or questions.
Mr. Chair, uh, I have a series of questions. Uh, may I have the floor at this time? This is Mark Gardner.
Yes, Commissioner Gardner, you have the floor.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Ritchie, thank you for your fine presentation. Uh, I've actually listened to this presentation uh, over the last several years, and I appreciate your fine explanation of Nevada Open Meeting Law. Uh, once again, I agree with you. I, I'd much prefer to be doing this in person. I think it's a much, much clearer and easier to understand. A- as we discussed privately, uh, I take the elements of open meeting law very seriously. And as you know, I'm very strong proponent of the rights of our citizens to be involved in our government in an open and transparent manner. So uh, I, in that regard, I, I have several questions in regards to open meeting law, and I beg the indulgence of my fellow commissioners and uh, and you, Mr. Chair. Uh, first of all, just a general question. Are we still requiring that all members of our appointed boards and commissions to once again view and sign off that they've attended this type of training? And is that for both new appointments and for the holdovers from previous boards?
I, to be honest, I do not know. Open meeting law training is required for new public officials. For town uh, board members, it's required annually, I believe, off the top of my head. Um, but I do not keep track of that. Generally, the, like the county manager's office or the town admin, their, their offices keep track of that.
Okay, um, so that's, that's up to them then, is what you're.
Natalie, Natalie has a
An answer? Okay, okay.
Natalie, what's on the record? The county manager's office does keep track of that, and I send that out to all staff liaison, so staff employees that assist with the boards. And then to all new and existing um, members of the various advisory committees that we signed off on last year will go out after this meeting this year, and after you make appointments on Thursday, I'll send it all to all the staff and those advisory board members for them to watch both the videos that will be played today, and then additionally review our board policies. And then also, we have a welcome handbook to all advisory members.
Okay, because I, I, I take it, you know, I've been a member of the Senior Services Advisory Board uh, for the last couple of years, and I I knew we were under those same O M L laws that the Board of Commissioners were, and I wanted to, wanted to re, re uh, assert that, that, or reaffirm that, that that's, that's still the case. Um, we, we have a considerable amount of G I Ds in this county also. Uh, are the trustees of those boards also required to, to attend this training, or is that up to each G I D?
I believe every elected official has to undergo this training. I, I don't know if the G I Ds have, if only the new members have to be trained.
Okay. I, I just, I've talked to a number of trustees and, and in the different G I Ds, and they've indicated that uh, this seems to be a common problem that uh, multiple members that have our holdovers from previous years uh, uh, fail to respect the open meeting law uh, process. And so I, you know, I, I would hope that maybe we would reach out to those G I Ds and uh, offer this training so that all the members of the G I Ds can be reacquainted with this process and policy. So uh, so anyways, that's, that's, that's where I am there. I, I have some issues that, uh, I'm trying to reconcile something. Uh, and I've had this question for a couple of years, and uh, as, as a member of the public, of course, we can't ask questions uh, except for items that are on the agenda. And so since we're on O M L today, I guess I, these questions are open, right? Would that be a correct assessment? So uh, anyways, uh, previously when this board was meeting in person, uh, and I would get copies of the agenda, there was an item that was articulated and written that, that concerned me. And when I look at uh, open meeting law, and I, I have a copy of it in front of me, so I was trying to reconcile these, these two uh, actions. Uh, NRS two forty-one point oh two oh two D three talks about public uh, comment uh, not being required for items that are on the agenda for, for presentation only. Well, I understand that. Uh, however, there's another line at the bottom of that, and it's printed on every agenda prior to uh, the current COVID uh, issues, but it says, uh, and I quote, "For agenda items identified as for possible action, comma, although not required, comma, public comment will be allowed to, as each of those agenda items are heard by the board." Those three words, although it's a slight nuance, although not required, to me, conflicts with Nevada revised statutes where uh, under section three, periods devoted to comments by the pub, by the general public, if any, in discussion of these comments, comments by the general public must be taken. A, at the beginning of the meeting, and B, after each item on the agenda for which action may be taken is discussed by the public body, but before the public body takes action on this item. Those two, those two issues, or those two oh, comments don't seem to mesh to me. Can you, can you uh, can you bring me uh, in line with that?
Sure. That, that's a great question. Here, here's what open meeting law requires. Two, two periods of public comment. For sure, at the beginning of the meeting and at the end of the meeting, or in lieu of it then to the meeting, allow public comment as the agenda, as you're proceeding through the agenda on every item that's identified for possible action. I think the conservative approach that the board has taken in the past is to do both. There's opening public comment, there's closing public comment, and then also there's public, public comment allowed on each agenda item as it proceeds. But under the open meeting law, in fact, let me see if I can pull up the, the A G's own agenda. If I can find it. If I can share screen again. Can you see that? Can you see that, Commissioner Gardner?
Yes.
Yeah, that's, that's the open meeting law task force agenda, the most recent one. If you notice, their first item is call to order, and then public comments. And then they have their agenda, and then they have closing public comments. That's what's required in the open meeting law. Some public bodies, instead of doing a closing public comment, they will allow public comment as each for possible action item is discussed. Um, the board's past practice, and my general recommendation is to allow as much public comment as possible. Um, so we have opening public comment, we have closing public comment, and then also there's public comment as each item is discussed. Again, if you refer to the Attorney General's own agenda, they only provide opening and closing public comment. So does that answer your question?
Well, you finally pointed me in the right direction, and yes, it does, because I now see the word between item one and item two under section three, the word or.
Yes.
And that word or is very important at that particular place in open meeting law. So, yes, that answers my question. I appreciate it. I've been, it's been, believe it or not, it's been a burning question of mine for a couple of years. And I've never had the opportunity to really uh, to find the, the answer out to that. I guess I should have asked you earlier. Uh, anyways, uh, another question I have is, uh, so I, I recently watched a Regional Transportation Committee board meeting last Wednesday when the public was allowed to join via the Zoom platform and to not only comment at the beginning and end of, both visually and verbally versus having to call in via phone. I, I really appreciated that. Uh, is there any reason, however, why the public was not allowed to make public comment after the four possible action item prior to the board action? And was that strictly a, a discretion, is that at the discretion of the chair then?
Um, you're talking about the, the Board of County Commissioners?
No, I'm talking about the Regional Transportation Board last Wednesday.
Oh, okay. Yeah, that's.
No, they did allow public comment at the beginning and at the end, and so this, this particular section where you just indicated would apply to that. It's at the discretion of the chair. Is that right?
That's correct. It's a policy decision, yes.
Okay, um, and, and while I appreciate your earlier comments regarding the A G's directive uh, uh, being not for the better, uh, I would concur with that, as you would imagine. Uh, I know, I, I, I know that the Attorney General's directive has given us great latitude in what I personally interpret to be circumvention of O M L over the last nine months due to this COVID pandemic. Uh, I'm not asking now whether or not it was right, but rather or not, whether or not it would have been legal for the chair of our previous board to allow the public to participate via Zoom and comment prior to board action on those items marked for possible action. Would that have been legal?
That's a great question. Um, the new board can uh, request uh, an attorney-client meeting, and we can discuss the legality of the, the county, the county's actions uh, during the previous year.
I, I guess, okay, so, so, so I, I'll finish with this then. Well, no, I actually have a couple more. Earlier this year, uh, I, I felt like uh, there was a meeting of a particular board within our county that uh, I felt was important to have public comment. And so I reached out to the chair, and I asked them if that meeting could be held uh, in public uh, and allow the public to participate in it. And he informed me that uh, uh, it could not be, the venue could not be changed, and the method of, of communications could not be changed because the ten-day uh, notice had already been uh, displayed to the public. Uh, however, when I read O M L, I cannot find anything regarding a ten-day requirement, only a, 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 a three-day requirement, so a, a, is there anywhere in the O M L that uh, specifies ten days?
To my knowledge, under the open meeting law, there's no ten-day notice requirement. There may be other statutory requirements, but under the O M L, it's nine AM, three business days.
Okay, so, so you really don't know where that ten-day idea might have come from?
Yeah, I, I'm not sure what you're referring to.
Okay. Uh, I know, I know Sam Taylor is uh, watching also, and I don't know if he might be able to uh, is, is there anything in your knowledge, Mr. Taylor, in regards to that notice, public notice?
Uh, yes, Commissioner Gardner, uh, under the code, uh, all development applications have a ten-day notice requirement. So it exists above and beyond what exists for the O M L. So you would have to re-agendize and re, you know, reschedule your meeting if you violate that ten-day notice. So.
Okay, well, I didn't want to be specific. I, I didn't want to be, I, I didn't want to be specific, but I was asking a question of the Planning Commission when they were discussing uh, the, the uh, uh, the master plan, and so there was no development there involved in that, and so that's why I was confused is to regard a ten-day requirement versus a three-day. Pardon me?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Commissioner Gardner. Um, I got a little bit of a delay here on my uh, machine. Sam Taylor for the record for Douglas County DA's office. Uh, under the uh, NRS, there is a ten-day notice requirement for the master plan specifically.
Oh, okay, thank you. I appreciate that. That, that's good knowledge. Uh, so, so let me, let me summarize uh, here, uh, Mr. Ritchie. So according to my understanding of your comments and uh, this open meeting law thing, and even with the A G's directives, should this board go forward with a hybrid format for their meetings as we move forward into this year? It would be legal for us to once again meet in public with the proper COVID mitigation elements and protocol in place. And for those individuals of our community who wish to participate in our local government via Zoom, for whatever reasons they personally determine, will also be allowed to make comments on four possible action items once again. Would that be a correct statement?
Yes, yes. This is Doug Ritchie.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Once again, I, I will, I, I will communicate that uh, open meeting law is very, very important to me, and uh, and also the rights of our citizens to uh, meet in public uh, under their First Amendment rights, uh, uh, in, in an open and transparent manner. So anyways, I appreciate your indulgence of my comments. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, for the time.
The great questions. Are there any other questions?
I don't. Okay, well, uh, we'll consider that agenda item complete. And I see that we have been joined by Yvonne. Is that correct?
Yes, hello. Good afternoon. Is everybody able to hear me?
Yes, we can. I'll tell you what. Why don't you go ahead and, um, pick up on agenda item number three and your presentation? Thank you.
Thank you. I, I appreciate the opportunity to appear, um, back before the, the County Commission. Um, I know we have some new members. For those of you who I haven't had the opportunity to meet, uh, my name is Yvonne Navarres-Gutson. I'm the Executive Director of the Nevada Commission on Ethics. And, um, I, again, appreciate, I, I get to come out and, and speak to the County Commission on a pretty annual basis, and I really enjoy, um, this opportunity simply because, um, your questions are always terrific. And although we're in a different platform this year in this virtual environment, I still do welcome, um, the, the questions and, and the feedback in making this as interactive as possible, in particular because I, I know that we do have some new members. So, um, so with that in mind, um, for some of you, this will be a little bit redundant, but hopefully I can just bring some presence to the notion of ethics in government and what that means for you all in the various, um, positions that you're holding. And first and foremost, um, a little bit about the Ethics Commission. Obviously, we have, um, a, a unique jurisdiction and a lot of things that come up for the Ethics Commission. Um, our questions about things that the Ethics Commission technically does not have jurisdiction over. So hopefully by the time we're done today, you'll have a better sense of what we do as a commission, the authority we do have, and also the authority we don't have, where we're going to refer certain issues either back internally to your agency, um, or of course to, to another agency altogether. And so a little bit about the Ethics Commission. Uh, we are an eight-member public body. We're half-appointed by the governor and half-appointed by the legislature. Um, so my commissioners, uh, much like you all, are public officers themselves. They are subject to the very laws that they interpret and enforce. Um, and that really is the scope of their jurisdiction. They are interpreting and enforcing the provisions of the Nevada Ethics in Government Law, uh, which is a series of standards of conduct that apply to us as elected and appointed officials, and also all of the public employees who are serving our respective agencies. And what we're really looking at specifically, um, are notions of conflicts of interest. So conflicts between our public duties and certain private interests. And that's really what the goal of this training is going to be for you today, is to have a better understanding of the types of private interests that are going to trigger conflicts for you in your ability to carry out your public duties. And by public duties, I mean any decisions you're being asked to make, whether it's an agenda item, whether it's a behind-the-scenes issue affecting the county that you have some role with, um, whether it's another committee that you're serving on because of your, uh, either elected or appointed positions. Um, and this is again, um, this training applicable, obviously, to, to those elected officials who are serving on the board, but also, um, the individual public employees who are serving the county. Um, and, and the reason why I think it's so important and to look at this, um, not only from your own responsibilities under ethics law, but also to understanding, um, when your employees or your staff may be coming forward to you, um, to disclose conflicts or to let you know about potential conflicts of interest that could be going on, um, within the county that could affect the decisions that you ultimately make. And so, um, again, um, and I have, thank you, Carrie. I appreciate if you could keep going forward on the PowerPoint. Is everybody able to see the PowerPoint?
Yes.
Okay, terrific. Um, the other attempt I have here, really just to bring a little bit of levity to some ethics and government law and keep you engaged after lunch, are a couple of videos here. But I thought this is a, a fun video that shows, you know, why do we have ethics in government law at all? And, you know, we have, um, we come from the Watergate scandal, which originated with, you know, the notion of is there corruption in government? Are there conflicts of interest? So every time you hear one of these sort of gate-like scandals that comes up, it originates from Watergate and it kind of triggers, um, this notion of ethics. And I thought this was a good example of, you know, the worst possible scandal we've seen in presidential history.
The president came out addressing reporters on Thursday, and he was wearing this tan suit. Tan suit, tan suit, tan suit. President Obama's decision to wear a light tan suit at yesterday's news conference.
He was wearing a tan suit.
Light tan suit.
I, I think it was shocking to a lot of people. Is this an effort to make him look warmer?
There's no way, I think, any of us can excuse what the president did yesterday. I mean, and then for him to walk out, I'm not trying to be trivial here, but in a light suit, uh, light tan suit.
Also known as tangate.
Tan suit, and how the tan suit made him look un-presidential.
Whoever talked him into going into a tan suit, they're so desperate because of these low poll numbers. They're willing to do anything.
The tan suit made him look un-presidential.
Okay, so now everybody has perfect understanding of ethics, right? Can't wear a tan suit to a public meeting. Um, I offer that just for a little bit of levity, right, about ethics. But really, um, we're going to talk about the merits. Um, and hopefully sometimes, um, throughout the rest of this, you'll get an understanding or appreciation that sometimes the absurd draws the point. Um, but what we're really talking about, of course, are going to be the more significant and serious issues. Um, three primary functions of the Ethics Commission. Um, our first, of course, is our resource that, um, is hopefully available to you anytime you need it. And this is our advisory function. Um, this is a process whereby if you have any question or concern about the applicability of the ethics law to your circumstances, whether or not you have a conflict, and if so, what should you do about that conflict? You're able to come to the Ethics Commission for confidential advice. Um, and of course, we, we intend that to be a resource for you. Um, there are a lot of other resources available to you short of coming for formal advice from the Ethics Commission, um, including seeking the advice of your legal counsel that represents the, the county. Um, but obviously, um, sometimes these questions come up all the way up to the commission's attention because it's maybe an issue we haven't seen before. Uh, maybe we need to, um, provide additional precedent in a particular area. And because most of our opinions are fact-dependent, you may have a circumstance that is, um, applying to you in the county that maybe doesn't affect, um, other agencies or, uh, other counties in a similar way. And that's what we're hoping to be available to you for that resource. Um, the second function, of course, is the enforcement arm of the commission. And this is one whereby we will adjudicate and investigate ethics complaints that may be filed. Um, and while I think that seems, um, concerning to a lot of individuals, particularly those who have put themselves out there to serve the public in the way that you have, either in an elected position or, uh, as a public employee, um, I would like to assure you that there are a number of safeguards and due process set forth in the law, uh, as well as the confidentiality of any investigation that are intended to protect, um, not only the person who might be subject to an investigation, but also the individual who may bring the issue forward, um, so that the commission can best assess, you know, what's going on here. Is there a potential violation, or is this something perhaps that's more minor that can be addressed through education, advice, and those types of things? And then, of course, I've alluded to it through our advisory function, but our third primary purpose or, or function, rather, at the commission is really what I'm doing here today, which is this type of outreach and education. And what I think is relatively important is that there, there have been years where the Ethics Commission has asked the legislature to mandate this type of ethics training for not only our elected officials, but also all public employees, because the potential consequences of violating the ethics law can be significant. Um, and yet, you know, probably short of the last, I want to say 10 years, the Ethics Commission was learning that there was really a lack of understanding or awareness even, um, by elected officials that the ethics law even existed. And so really, we're trying to turn the page here and, and make it more accessible and understandable in layman's terms and not, um, some of this, uh, statutory language that we use to make it a, a little bit more understandable. And then finally, um, beyond those three primary functions, for those of you on the board, certainly, and other individuals in the county who are deemed to be public officers, you do have an additional responsibility under the ethics law, which is to file your acknowledgement of statutory ethical standards form. Um, and this is a pretty straightforward form, um, which really is just acknowledging that you understand that you're subject to the ethics law and the jurisdiction of the Ethics Commission, and that you're filing this form on or before January 15th, after your election, or after a general election, rather. Um, and if you're an appointed official, there are different timelines. Um, it's within 30 days of an appointment. Um, and again, depending on what position you hold, for example, my position as the Executive Director, I am a public officer as well. I'm an appointed public officer. And I serve an indefinite term. And so my responsibility is to file it within 30 days of my appointment and then on or before January 15th of each even-numbered year. So those of, um, you, for example, your county manager, um, would have those same responsibilities to, to file in that manner. Okay. Um, I'd like to spend a little bit of time, and again, I apologize for any redundancy this might give for those of you who have this training before. But really, what I find the most critical part of understanding ethics law is to understand the types of private interests that you may hold that could create conflicts for you in your ability to carry out your public decision-making. And there's really two types of private interests that the legislature has identified for us. And the first is the more tangible, um, private interest. These are pecuniary interests or our financial interests. And most of us happen to have a pretty good understanding of what our own financial bottom line is. So if we're being asked to make a decision or vote on an agenda item, uh, or weigh in on an issue that is going to affect our own financial bottom line, then we do have a conflict. That conflict may not always be disqualifying, but we have to be able to recognize that but for you holding that position in government, the elected seat, or perhaps a, a decision-maker at the county staff level, if it's affecting your own financial interests, you do have to be able to recognize the conflict. And secondly, and the second type of private interest, and the one that gets most misapplied still and misunderstood, are what we refer to in-house as relationship-based conflicts. And these conflicts in statute are referred to as commitments in a private capacity to the interests of another person. And that's a rather large mouthful. And what that really is saying, what that really means, is that the legislature has said for us that we have relationships with certain individuals and certain entities that are so close and personal in nature that the law is going to impute their interests to become your interests to create the conflict. And I know that's a mouthful, and so hopefully I can walk you through some sort of real-life examples of where this might apply. But the types of relationships the legislature has expressly identified for us are family members and relatives within the third degree of consequentiary affinity. And for those of you who are saying, what in the world is the third degree of consequentiary affinity? If this, these are relationships by blood, by marriage, by adoption, by domestic partnership. And they're within the third degree of us, right? So our parents, our grandparents, our children, grandchildren, um, siblings, aunts and uncles, nieces and nephews. Um, when we start to get beyond that, and we have a chart if there's ever a question about just how far that goes. But when it starts to get beyond those sort of immediate third-degree relationships, then we have to question, you know, could this category of relationships fall within the statute? And we'll get to that too. But the other relationships that are expressly identified beyond those family members are going to be individuals or, or entities that employ us, um, persons with whom we share substantial and continuous business relationships, members of our household, and substantially similar relationships as those I've just described. So for example, if your third cousin twice-removed is not in the third degree of consequentiary, but nevertheless, this person was raised in your household by virtue of your family circumstances, they were akin to a sibling, perhaps, in the way that you were raised together, that's going to be the type of relationship that's substantially similar to a sibling. And so the goal here really is that, and, and the onus is on us as individual public officers to be able to look at the nature of the relationships we have and make these decisions about what is the nature and scope of this relationship? Does it fall within one of these categories to potentially create a conflict for me? And the only time this is going to matter is if you have an issue before you in your official capacity that affects the interests of one of these individuals. So let me see if I can bring a little bit of context to this issue. Um, one of my job responsibilities as the Executive Director of the Ethics Commission is to investigate the complaints, um, that are filed with the Ethics Commission. And it probably, um, might actually surprise some of you to know that in the state of Nevada, between our state and local governments, we have about approximately 145,000 public officers and public employees in this state, all of whom are subject to the jurisdiction of the Ethics Commission. And it just so happens I'm related to some of them. And so it couldn't possibly be appropriate for me to investigate an ethics complaint that came in against one of those public employees who happens to be my sister. Right? I mean, that, that has all the sense of favoritism, bias, inappropriate. And when we look at why that's inappropriate, we go back to the entire purpose of ethics and government law, which is that as elected officials, we are supposed to be engaging in decision-making um, that best benefits the interests of the public. It's not our own self-dealing opportunity, right? So what is the public going to trust about our ability to be objective and independent and make decisions in their best interests if we're lining our own pockets or if we're helping out our family members or our business partners and, and so forth? And it's really that connection back to, you know, sort of the public's trust in government um, that we have to keep for, front, front and center, um, when we're making these types of decisions. So the example with my sister, right? So my sister is a relative within the third degree of consequentiary. The law says for me, the legislature has said, oh, wait a minute, she's a category of relationship that we are deeming to be a conflict for you. And so what do I do about it? Right? Well, as the Director of the Agency, could I just hide that complaint in my stack of papers, never to see the light of day, so that hopefully my sister never gets investigated? Again, if I were to do something like that, I would be misusing my power and authority in government to benefit the interests of my sister. So first and foremost, my objective and my responsibility under ethics law, when I'm confronted with one of these conflicts, is I have to tell somebody, right? I have to disclose the fact that I have this conflict of interest. And in my circumstances, I would disclose the conflict to the commission. The commission appoints me to my position. They're the ones that would be, need to be, um, informed that the agency is confronted with this conflict. You, um, and you, I'm referring to the members of the, of the County Commission, um, as the elected officials and the members of the governing board, your responsibility would be to disclose these conflicts to the public at the time the matter is to be considered. So when the agenda item is called and you recognize, well, wait a minute, this agenda item has the potential to affect the interests of my sister, I have to disclose what those interests are and how this agenda item could affect my sister's interests, for example, or my own personal financial interests, if that were the case. Um, and so disclosure is the key there. And so I think what I said at the outset is the entire goal behind this training is to help you recognize when you have a conflict of interest. Some of those conflicts are going to be disqualifying for you, which means that because of that conflict, you are unable and not permitted to act in your official capacity. And others will mean that a disclosure will be sufficient. Okay, and we'll talk about that difference or that balance between what's appropriate for disclosure and what rises to the level of a disqualification. Now, I'm using the word disqualify. You might also understand the word recusal, recusing yourself from voting on a particular matter or hearing a particular matter participating. Our statute uses the word abstention, abstain from voting or abstain from otherwise acting on an official matter in which you have a conflict. Now, that's when those conflicts affect you, um, as individual members of the board. But I also want you to be able to recognize that there might be circumstances in which county staff or certain issues may come to your attention as the governing body about conflicts. conflicts beneath you. So it could be, for example, that the county manager has a conflict of interest. There is an assignment that is delegated to the county manager, either under the code provisions, or some direction that you, as an agency, may have given to the county manager, and he may say, "Well, wait a minute. I'm unable to act on this because it affects the interests of my spouse." And he's going to be responsible for disclosing that conflict to you, who appoint him to that position. And the reason I say it's very important is it's not just appropriate for you to say, "Oh, well, thanks for letting us know about this conflict of interest. Go ahead and do it anyway." In the same way that my Commission wouldn't tell me, "Well, thank you, Yvonne, for letting me know you have this conflict of interest, but go ahead and investigate your sister anyway." So we have obligations as governing Board members, as appointing authorities, to understand our own conflicts, but also to understand the conflicts that may come to us in our role as governing body members, or supervisors, or managers, or whatever it may be. And so, you know, I usually say this to public employees, but there's not many public employees who would feel comfortable breaking the law because their boss told them they could. And so if my boss, the Commission, said to me, "Hey, Yvonne, you know, resources are tight. We can't afford to hire an outside investigator, so you just have to go ahead and investigate your own sister." Well, I'm going to be the one responsible for violating the ethics law. I'm going to be subject to those sanctions and those potential disciplinary actions. And so we really need to have a good understanding, whether in our own individual role or our role as an appointing authority. Okay. So taking my thought to fruition about these conflicts, again, if I'm investigating my sister's, or if I receive a complaint about my sister, I have to disclose that it exists to the Commission. It's going to be a material conflict, which means I'm disqualified from investigating that case. And the Commission's going to either have to delegate that assignment to somebody else, or hire an outside investigator. Now, we can be creative problem solvers within the resources of our respective agencies. My Commission, and certainly as we navigate these economic circumstances that we're going to be confronted with here as a result of this pandemic, we're going to have to be a little bit more creative. But my Commission perhaps would say, "Okay, Yvonne, well, obviously, as the Director of the Agency, we can't have you involved in any way. We can't have you delegate this to somebody else in the Agency. We can't have your subordinates reporting to you about their boss's sister, right? But we, as a Commission, we can delegate this to somebody else within the Agency." And so there are ways that this can happen. We can have the investigator report directly to the Commission, password "protect documents" so I can't get involved, either on purpose or inadvertently. This protects me from an ethics violation. It protects the Commission from public perception that somehow there's something inappropriate going on in the work of the Agency. And these ideas and these suggestions I just bring to your attention, just to make the point that you all, of course, within the boundaries of your code provisions and your charter and all of those things that may apply to the decisions that you make, and of course, you would be consulting with your legal counsel about those issues, but there are things we can do to avoid these conflicts and protect the Agency, and also, frankly, to protect yourselves as individuals from ethics complaints being filed, or from violating the ethics law, whether or not a complaint is filed at all. So with that in mind, I understand I spent a little bit of time on this issue, but when we come back to the statutory provisions that affect your conduct, the standards that affect your conduct going forward, it's always going to come back to what is the private interest that is in play with your public duties? If it doesn't affect a private interest, it's probably not going to fall within the scope and jurisdiction of the ethics law. So let me make that clear. We get a number of complaints, and probably will get a number of complaints you'll never even know about. And it may say, "Hey, you know, Nevada Commission on Ethics, the Chair of the Douglas County Commission voted on this matter, and he really blew it. He made a poor decision. We don't agree with it. We think it's against the public's interest. Super unethical. Go get him." Well, that's not the role of the Ethics Commission, to come in and second-guess the decisions, the policy decisions that you all are making in the best interests of the county. That's why you're elected to those positions. That's why your staffers are appointed to their various positions, because they have the expertise and the knowledge to be able to make those decisions that affect your county. The Ethics Commission is not going to come in and second-guess those issues. We're only going to be concerned if you're making those decisions because they affect your private interests, which means it's potentially unfair, potentially biased, potentially against the public's interest. And those distinctions, I think, are very valuable to understand. We're not the policy police coming in to question every decision that you make. And so with that in mind, I want to talk a little bit about these statutory provisions. These are all prohibitions, right? It's going to sound rather negative. These are all the things you shall not do to avoid violating the ethics law, but really, it's just to protect your interests. And it always is going to come back to one of these private interests: financial interest, impropriety, commitments to different individuals that are going to trigger these statutes. And the first one is a prohibition against seeking or accepting gifts. Now, what our statute says applies to all elected and appointed public officers and public employees. We are prohibited from accepting any gift of any value at any time from any person if it's the type of gift that's intended to improperly influence how you carry out your public duties. Okay, so the triggering words in the statute are going to be, "Is it a gift that's intending to improperly influence how we carry out our public duties?" Most people aren't going to impugn their integrity, risk removal from office, some sort of disciplinary action over a cup of Starbucks coffee, right? So we have to think about these things reasonably. The elected officials that I may be addressing in today's comment, you, of course, have your disclosure responsibilities with the Secretary of State for various gifts and things of that nature. But what we're talking about here are the types of gifts that are intended to influence the decisions that you make. In the more extreme side of this, you can think about it as bribes, right? Or quid pro quo's. You give me this, I'll make this decision for you. I'll vote for that. You pat my back, I'll pat your back. That's the more sort of extreme version of this statute. It also comes into play in the more absurd and less strict areas, and so we just have to be careful. And that's why we say even gifts of nominal value can trigger this potential statute. And gifts are not just tangible things. They're favors, promises, economic opportunities. So we really have to be careful, and we have to look at this from the perspective of, "Why is this person offering me this gift? Is it because there's going to be an agenda item before me next month, or in six months that affects their interests, and then now I'm on the hook because I took this gift, and now I can't vote in the best interests of the public?" So be very careful when you're presented with these types of opportunities, and think about, "Would a reasonable person in your situation be influenced to make a decision based upon this gift that was provided?" Okay? All right. So our next statute, this is our catch-all statute. This statute applies virtually anytime we see a problem with any of our ethics statutes. And this is a prohibition against the misuse of your position to seek or grant unwarranted benefits for yourself, or for one of these persons to whom you have these commitments that we talked about. So again, the sort of triggering words here in this statute that we look at are unwarranted benefits. And I like to think of this statute as the "but-for" statute. But for you holding the official position you hold, would you be able to secure or grant this opportunity, this privilege, this benefit, this exception to yourself, or to a person to whom you're related? So in other words, if you didn't hold the position you held, you couldn't make it happen, you probably shouldn't be doing it then, right? But for you holding that position. Okay. All right. So the next few statutes I want to talk about, we have several of them in our chapter of provisions that apply. What I'd like to just point out, and there's a lot of nuance to these statutes, but what we're talking about here are prohibited contracts. And so generally speaking, we are prohibited as government agents from having any contract in our private lives with governmental agencies, state or local government agencies. There are a lot of exceptions that may apply, but generally, you have to know that there are various provisions of law that could prohibit this type of contract. So if you're a county commissioner, and you also happen to own a plumbing business on the side, you might say, "Why would it matter if my plumbing business that operates primarily here in Douglas County wants to have a contract with Nye County, for example? I couldn't misuse my position to acquire that contract. I would have no authority over Nye County's choice." All of those things. Well, the first answer is that generally, you're prohibited, but there could be an exception that would apply. The Commission might grant relief because we don't find those elements of inappropriate influence over the contract. It might be an exception because it's an inherently open and competitively bid type of contract. So there are exceptions that may apply. But what I want you to be careful about, and this is where I, again, would refer you back to your agency legal counsel, even if you were to receive an exception under the ethics law, there are concurrent criminal statutes that prohibit you from having financial interests in government contracts when you are a government representative. So there could be some restrictions outside of the scope and jurisdiction of the Ethics Commission to authorize you to do so. So if you have that circumstance, number one, I would make sure that the statute does or doesn't apply, maybe come to the Commission for relief, but also be getting counsel from your agency legal counsel about whether or not that statute applies to you on the criminal side. The next section really is not one we see violated all that often. It would probably be pretty egregious if it was. But technically, we are prohibited from accepting outside compensation from the private sector for performing our public duties, right? This would look an awful lot like pay-to-play type of scenario. And so we see this more with public employees, you know, trying to get additional compensation for what they're already being paid by the taxpayers to do. But it applies equally to us as elected officials and public employees. And so just know, if someone from the private sector should just be offering you oodles and oodles of extra money to do what you're already doing, you probably can't take that money for that purpose. The next two provisions I liken in most respects to what we understand in the private sector as insider trading. Well, in the government sector, we are privy to non-public government information, even if it's temporarily non-public, and we should not be utilizing that information or suppressing that information because it might tend to affect our personal interests, either financially or the interests of a person to whom we have one of these relationships that we talked about. So again, you know, a lot of this is common sense. This is really talking about the misuses of our positions, but don't misuse information or suppress non-public information because it happens to benefit you personally. And the next section, again, speaks for itself, but it still remains the most violated provision in our statutes, both by elected officials and by public employees. And this is a prohibition against the misuse of government resources for a personal purpose. Where we see this with elected officials is during campaign season. So incumbents running for reelection have to keep their campaign interests separate and apart from their public duties. This can be as simple as not utilizing your government-issued email address for campaign-related or other political purposes, right? We have to keep separation between our private campaign-related or political issues versus our government work. But more tangibly, of course, this section applies to public employees and the use of their computers, and the county vehicles, and, you know, actual tangible equipment for a personal purpose. At the staff side, the most overlooked government resource is our time, right? When we're on the clock, we're being paid by the taxpayers. We owe our time to the public and not to do our sort of online shopping, and, you know, getting everything else done under the sun that's not in the best interests of the public. And so we can, of course, again, see this from the very egregious misuse of government resources to the very absurd example of the same. And in that vein, again, just to wake us all back up, I have a couple of videos here, one to show kind of the funner side of misuse of government time, and all the way to the Okay, so we had that video, and now we kind of have the more serious side of misuse of government resources.
A senior IRS official has apologized to Congress for wasting taxpayer dollars at an employee conference. The IRS spent over $4 million at a training event in Anaheim, California, three years ago. The perks included tickets to Los Angeles baseball games and $64,000 worth of gifts for attendees. They also spent $50,000 to produce a Star Trek video and another video of IRS agents dancing. The House Oversight Committee Chairman Darryl Issa called the spending maliciously self-indulgent. The IRS official who played Spock in the Star Trek video faced the wrath of Congress Thursday.
I have looked at that video over and over again, and I swear, I do not see the redeeming value.
What were you thinking? Were you thinking this will never be seen?
Frankly, they were not appropriate at that time, neither, Mr. Chairman. And the fact of the matter is, is it's embarrassing, and I apologize.
The IRS spent $49 million on 225 employee conferences over the past three years.
Joining us now with more is Terry Jeffrey, editor-in-chief for CNSnews.com, which has been investigating the IRS scandals. Terry, let's start with this shocking waste, possibly millions of dollars wasted by the IRS at these conventions. What have you uncovered?
Well, they had 49 conventions at places around the country for IRS employees, including, for example, four that were at Las Vegas casinos. They had two at Caesar's Palace, one in New York, New York, and another at the Mandalay Bay Resort Casino in Las Vegas. They had another conference in Anaheim where they rented out three hotels. One was the Hilton right across the street from Disneyland. One of the deputy commissioners of the IRS spent five days in the presidential suite of the Hilton across from Disneyland at the expense of the US taxpayers.
All shocking. How on earth, with us facing a massive debt problem, did these conferences get approved?
It's really unbelievable. It just shows you a culture of contempt that bureaucrats in the IRS have for the American taxpayer. I mean, you think about it, going out to Disneyland, bringing, they literally brought thousands of IRS employees to that convention during a time when the US economy was struggling, and thinking that this is a legitimate expenditure of government funds. It's really, it ought to be inconceivable, but this did in fact happen. Or even going to Las Vegas at all, and spending taxpayer money, let alone at these posh resort casinos, it's really extraordinary.
Indeed, it is. On another scandal, information is-
Okay. So, you know, the second one, obviously, the second video obviously shows an example of more egregious misuse of government resources, but while not funny, I find, you know, even Nevada, Las Vegas gets in trouble even when we're not the center of the problem. But I think it draws the point, right? Which is that we have to be stewards of the public and the taxpayer dollars, and we have to be responsible to the public about how we're utilizing taxpayer dollars, and certainly should not be utilizing those for personal purposes, like trips and events. And, you know, it's wholly appropriate to attend a conference, a worthy government-public purpose type of conference, but we simply can't go overboard and misuse those resources for the personal side. Okay. I'm really close to being done here. I just want to draw a few points to a few straggler statutes out there, and of course, the next one being that we would be prohibited from misusing our position to improperly influence subordinates for a personal purpose, right? So we have to think about this from the perspective of the subordinate. One thing that I think gets lost from an ethics perspective on governing bodies, county commissions, city councils, et cetera, because we tend to have a city or county manager form of government, is that a lot of elected officials won't view the county or city staff as their subordinates. But for purposes of ethics law, county and city staff are considered subordinates. So we should not be asking subordinate county and city staff for personal favors, for example, or improperly influencing them in any way for a personal purpose. And so, again, from the absurd to the more- And so again, from the absurd to the more egregious examples of this type of thing, asking a subordinate to work on a campaign for reelection would be a more significant concern. On the less significant side would be, for example, can you run a favor for me and go pick up my dry cleaning? Again, inappropriate, but not as as egregious as some of the stuff we might see. And then I spent a lot of time upfront, kind of letting you know the types of private interests that could potentially create conflicts for you and what your responsibilities would be when confronted with one of those conflicts. And so first and foremost, we want you to be able to identify that the conflict exists. And that again is the financial interest or the relationship based conflict. But then we talked about some of those conflicts being disqualifying. Well, anytime you're confronted with one of these conflicts, your first and foremost obligation is to disclose the conflict. And so as governing body members, it may be that you have subordinate staff coming to you to disclose their conflicts. And certainly as members of the board, if you have your own conflict of interest that affects a potential agenda item, that may be considered, it's your responsibility to disclose that conflict at the time the matter is considered. Now, if the same agenda item is coming up meeting after meeting after meeting, it's not enough to say at a future meeting, oh, I already disclosed that, you know, last week. You have to disclose it each and every time the matter is considered. And you also must disclose the full nature and extent of the conflict such that the public understands how this agenda item does or does not affect your personal interests. Right? So again, this comes back to public transparency. It's not enough for me to say, for example, oh, hey, this ethics complaint affects my sister, right? I have to explain to the public or in my case, my boss, listen, my job responsibilities include an investigation. This complaint affects my sister's interests. It could affect her from a financial perspective. It could affect her job, could affect her from a disciplinary point of view. And if I rule on this, I'm materially affecting my sister's interests, right? And the purpose of disclosure actually, in in some regards, is to kind of talk you into or talk you out of how material the conflict is, right? Because when the conflict is material, that's when you have to decide whether or not it's disqualifying. And this is sometimes a difficult judgment call. Okay, so when we have a material conflict of interest, we are disqualified. We must abstain from acting on the matter or voting, as the case may be. And so you might ask, well, what determines whether something is a material conflict? And the truth is, it's really looked at as a case by case basis. Sometimes it's very obvious, it's clear cut. Oh, wait, this is going to affect my sister's employment. That's material, right? That's from an objective perspective, that's something that's a material interest. If this is, oh, you know, this development project is occurring, you know, five streets away from my neighborhood, will my house value go up? There's no way to, you know, ascertain whether that's true. You may still have a duty to disclose it, but you got to explain to the public, well, wait a minute, I'm voting on this issue development project. How and to what extent or will it affect my own interests in my property? Right? You've got to be able to explain those interests. And the reason that we have advisory opinions, the reason that we have other case precedent on file and the reason that you have access to your own legal counsel is because they're going to want to assess these abstentions from a material fact-based perspective. You're going to be coming to them with unique circumstances that affect your personal interests and they're going to want to be able to evaluate that and say, our advice in this instance would be that you abstain from voting. Now, keep in mind, the legislature has recognized that abstention should only be in those absolutely clear cases in which a person in your position could not be independent in their judgment, right? Because if you don't vote on something, you're divesting your constituents of their voice in government, right? So you shouldn't just be abstaining without disclosing the conflict. You really need to be looking at these circumstances very seriously when you're deciding you have to abstain because of that that critical public interest at stake. But please keep in mind that abstention is also very critical when you do have one of these material conflicts. So with that in mind, I wanted to refer you to why it is so important for you to partner with the legal counsel who represents the county, in this case, the district attorney's office. They are an incredible resource for you. We recognize it because we're their partners. So at the Ethics Commission, we have six staff that serve the entire state of Nevada. And when we go to the legislature and say, we need help, we need more resources, one of the things we look at is this safe harbor provision in the law, which says, okay, well, we know that resources are limited. So we're going to partner with the lawyers that work for the respective government agencies. And if those lawyers are advising you on ethics laws and conflicts of interest and you're relying in good faith on that advice, then it's going to protect you down the line from willful violations of the ethics law. Okay? Now, the caveat there, you have to be honest and forthcoming with the lawyer. You have to be able to be in good faith and get, let them give you the advice that's appropriate for the circumstances. And that's why it's so important for us that you first, you know, always, if you if you think you're going to have to abstain or you think there's a conflict on an agenda item, your first course of action should be to consult legal counsel about not not only whether you should abstain, but also the quality and content of the disclosure perhaps may be prudent. And in the unique circumstances where the commission maybe has not weighed on this issue in the past, you can certainly come all the way up to the commission for that advisory opinion so that we can make you best positioned to to comply with the ethics law and also serve your your constituents in that area. Okay. Well, I'm going to leave off kind of where I started with is, which is what the ethics law is not. And I think I stated upfront that, of course, we're not the policy police. So we're not here to second guess the decisions that you've been elected to make or the decisions that the the county staff is appointed to to make on your behalf, unless it involves those personal interests that we talked about. But there's also a few things we do not do. We do not govern campaign finance. That is a product of the Nevada Secretary of State's office. We also get a lot of complaints, frankly, about laziness and rudeness. And of course, we should all treat our colleagues and and our employees with respect and decorum. But I guess if there's an allegation that there's been some disrespect within an agency, it's probably not going to rise to the level of an ethics complaint or ethics oversight. And on the more serious side, of course, we have issues of sexual harassment or discrimination in the workplace. And while those are very serious issues and they can have concurrent ethical implications, there are other agencies best suited to address pure allegations of sexual harassment or discrimination, which could be your own HR department. It could be the Nevada Equal Rights Commission or or something of that nature. And so with that in mind, I'll leave you with one last video for humor. And then if there are any questions after that, I'd be happy to take them. So I'll leave you with this last video. Okay, Mr. Chairman, I want to thank you for the opportunity to present Ethics and Government Law and of course, reemphasize the fact that we are a resource available to you all. If you have questions or concerns or or issue.
Anybody have any questions?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Gardner.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Navarez, for your great presentation. And I appreciated the the humor at times during that. I'm going to ask you the same question I asked Mr. Ritchie in the open meeting law presentation. Are our appointed boards and commissioners or commission appointments also subject to these same laws? Oh, apparently she's muted.
Your video froze there for a second.
Yvonne.
Okay.
Hi there, I think I got cut off. I I missed that question.
Oh.
Gardner, could you repeat?
What I indicated is, I just, thank you for your presentation. I wanted to ask you the same question I asked Mr. Ritchie during open meeting law. Are the appointments that we make to our boards and commissions subject to these same laws?
I I would say that it depends. If the individual members of the various boards and committees that you're making appointments to are advisory only, then those advisory board members are not going to be considered public officers for purposes of the ethics law. But if if the appointments are you, your your own members to various committees, then the ethics law follows you as an elected official to the work that you do for those committees as well as any public employees would still be considered public employees in their role on those various boards and committees. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does. And what about the trustees of our various GIDs that that have been elected as well? Are they subject to these same laws or or not?
They are, yes. For general improvement districts, boards of trustees, they are all subject to the ethics laws as well.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. I have no other question.
Do you have any more questions? I see none. Yvonne, great presentation. We appreciate some of the levity that does make a point. And there's a lot of temptation out there. So everybody's well advised to heed what Yvonne just presented. And if you've got some Chicon friend named Fang Fang, you better discontinue the relationship. So with that, does everybody want to take a break, 10 minutes?
I I I noticed that Commissioner Noah said got up and stretched a few minutes ago and I could I could use the same thing. So I would hope that we could take a 10 minute break here, maybe come back at 3:40.
Okay. 3:30 now, we'll make it 3:40. And we'll reconvene at 3:40. And Yvonne, you're excused. Thank you.
Take care.
was on, and we might want to, since it has already been divided up, it might save a lot of time and effort to take a look at your, your district and what the prior commissioner had in that district. And decide if you wanted to be on those boards or not. I for one would like to stay on all the boards and commissions I am on. As I've been on them, many of them for several years and have a good working relationship with the people on the, on those different boards. And I would, I would think that, like Commissioner Nelson's, the Audit Committee, Valley Arts Council, Alternate Debt Management Commission, all of those might want to be absorbed by one commissioner, rather than try to go through everyone and divvy things up.
Um, I think that's a good approach. The, the one, I don't know where it is on that list, but I would like to stay on the Northern Nevada Development Authority. I've been working with them on a lot of different things. Other than that, um, we can, we can, each of us can look at the positions that are open or available and express an interest. So, and I think Mr. Cates' chart is pretty much the same. Is it that way, Commissioner Rice?
Uh, I, I can't see his chart.
You want to put that up again, Patrick?
Yes, sir. Okay, everybody see that?
Yes, I can see it now.
Okay. Okay, so, for example, I'd, I'd pick up Campo. Or some Water Subconservancy. Keep China Springs.
I think you mentioned the Arts Council as well.
Say again?
The Arts Council, I believe you mentioned that as well.
Yes, yes.
Uh, that's.
The N N D A got that on there. Uh, there's three on the Regional Transportation Committee. Is that correct? Oh, the alternate is.
No, there's, there are two commissioners on that.
Right, okay. And Commissioner Rice wants to stay with the entities that he is already on. So you can plug those in and we can start to see.
So, uh, Mr. Chair.
Yes. Now, we, we can switch these around from appointee to an alternate. This is a pretty good graphic, so we can, can figure out who's on first.
Chairman, can we make some other suggestions? We're waiting for you to fill out some more with you and the Vice Chair.
Go, go ahead. I mean, this is not in concrete.
No, I understand.
Okay, I'm sorry. Excuse me, excuse me, Mr. Tarkanian. Okay, go ahead.
I was hoping to get on the Western Nevada Developmental District. That's open, if that would be okay.
Okay, put that in there.
There's a few others, but I'll let other people speak first, I guess, before I say anything else.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Chair, this is Mark Gardner.
Yes.
Uh, I, I met a couple months ago with Commissioner Larry Walsh. And he explained to me the different commissions that he was on, boards that he was on. And I, I felt like I would like to try to continue his, his involvement in those commissions, so I'd like to serve on the, if, if it's, the, the board, to serve on the Carson Valley Chamber of Commerce Board.
Okay.
Uh, the Carson Valley Visitors Authority. The Carson Water Subconservancy District. Uh, as he was serving as alternate on the four county coalition. Uh, I'd like to serve as the alternate there then.
Okay.
Uh, I would like to represent this board at NACO, as he did. I realize that he was chairman of the Regional Transportation Committee, but that's a very narrow commission, and so I would forego that. Uh, and I would like to also serve as the alternate to Northern Nevada Development Authority, as he did.
Okay.
The, the only, oh, and, and I'd like to serve as your alternate on the Carson Valley Arts Council. I had an opportunity to work with the Arts Council in the In God We Trust item.
Okay.
And I, I, I would, you know, knowing that you're the, the primary there, I would like to serve as the alternate. Uh, in difference to, with all due respect to Commissioner Rice, uh, I really feel like it's important that this board spread its wings a little bit and, uh, and that we have some representation by more board members than just Mr. Rice up at Lake Tahoe. And since I would like to serve on the Carson Valley Visitors Authority and the Chamber of Commerce, I think a natural carryover there would be to also serve at the, at this board's liaison to the Lake Tahoe Visitors Authority as well. And so I'd like to, I'd like to entertain that.
Right there, Commissioner Rice, do you have a problem with that or?
Um, I have been with the Lake Tahoe Visitors Authority since I was first elected. And I have been instrumental in helping to get the Tahoe Events Center to the point where it is now. I would like to continue that work.
Okay.
Is there an alternative to that?
I'm sorry?
Is there an alternative position on that?
There's an alternate.
Not, yeah, not, I don't know if there, we have an alternate or not, but, okay.
South Shore Chamber?
Uh, sure, okay.
Yeah, the South Shore Chamber is open and, um, that, that would get your feet wet up here at the lake.
Wes, do you want to remain the?
I'm sorry?
Well, pardon that pun. Do you want, want to remain the alternate? At the, uh?
Yeah, Lake, Lake Tahoe, South Shore Chamber?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, um, I'm willing to give that one up.
Yeah, but do you want, would you want to be the alternate?
Oh, sure, yeah, not a problem.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, this is Danny Tarkanian again. There, because several of them were, were just taken from, by Mr. Gardner. I appreciate what he wants and I understand that. But there's one that I, one, oh, there's only one other left that I had on my list. I was hoping that maybe I could be on that, since the other ones are taken. And that's the, um, Nevada Transportation Committee. There's two spots for it and one of them's already taken. The Regional Transportation Commission.
You're talking about?
The Regional Transportation Commission, number 23.
Okay.
I'm troubled here that we haven't heard from Mr. Noah Sad yet at all in, in, in any of this. Uh, so I, I really feel like we need to give him an opportunity to speak up here.
Well, thanks for, thanks for, thanks for giving me that, that nudge there, because I was going to do it anyway. Uh, I prefer to be on the Audit Committee, for one. Also, the Carson Tahoe TDVA, I'd like to be on that.
I'm sorry, what was that?
What was what?
The last thing you said you wanted to be on?
TDVA.
Oh, TDVA, got you.
Oh, Douglas Visitors Authority?
Yes.
Okay, that's, that's one that I have been on for several years and, um, that, that is also very heavily involved in planning for the, uh, Visitors Event Center, Tahoe Event Center up here. I would like to remain on that.
Walt, would you be interested in debt management? If, if you're not, I'll take it.
Well, in addition to the Audit Committee, sure, that would be good. Debt management is a good one to have.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
For the record, Patrick Cates. I just wanted to point out that Campo, I have that down for your appointment, but I did want to point out that Campo is a regional transportation entity that is centered in Carson City and it only comes into Douglas County in the top section of the county. Um, which would be Commissioner Noah Sad's district, if that had any bearing on your decision.
Well, your call. I'll take it. It has to do with my, my district, I'll take it.
Good idea. Okay. Four County Coalition.
Did you say it was Campo?
Mr. Chairman, if I could explain that a little bit, it's not all that clear in the background. Um, the Four County Coalition refers to our lobbying efforts at the Nevada Legislature. The Four County Coalition is Douglas, Carson, Story, and Lion County. And we all get together during session. All four counties pay Walker and Associates to do lobbying at the legislature. It's not really a formal board, but during session, there's weekly meetings that we have to discuss legislation for the county to take positions on that legislation.
Okay, I'll, I'll take that. Um, that's like.
Uh, Mr. Cates?
Sir?
Mr. Cates, could you explain what is entailed in the law library?
Uh, not a lot.
No, I hold, I hold no, no legal certificate, but it interests me.
Commissioner Tarkanian, you're a little light in here. You want to take that one?
I can, if you guys want. I did, was, wanted to make sure Ms. Noah Sad had some of them. Somebody felt that he was being shut out, I didn't want to add to that. And I'm fine, if, if nobody else would like that, I can take the law library. I have a law degree, although I'm not a practicing attorney at this time.
Well, that would be something you would understand then, so.
Sure.
Okay, I will, I will yield.
Yeah, okay, Nevada Tahoe Conservation District.
But it, would it, maybe Walt would enjoy that, I don't know. What does that involve? I, I, sorry, I haven't read that fully.
Mark, weren't you on the Parks and Recreation Commission?
Well, you, you know, thank you, Mr. Rice. I, I, I was just looking at that and, and I didn't realize that we had a commissioner assigned to that commission. Uh, I'm, I'm serving currently, well, no longer, I should say. We'll be making those appointments on Thursday. But actually, the Senior Services and Public Transportation Advisory Board does not have an assignment of a, of a commissioner. I didn't realize Parks and Recreation did. And so, yes, I would enjoy serving on that, I believe. So, uh, Mr. Cates, if you could pencil me in there, that would be fine.
Okay, and I just, I had one comment on the Parks and Recs Commission.
Yes.
By statute, it says that a commissioner will be on that Parks and Recs Commission. Um, however, at some point in the past, the board declined to appoint a commissioner due to workload and therefore has not had a commissioner on it for a while. But we put it on here because it's supposed to be by statute and we wanted to give you that option.
Okay, yeah, that, like I said, that's fine. No, 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 not there. That's, that's, that's down below.
Twenty-two.
Parks and Rec, yeah, no, I, I enjoy working with those folks and Scott Morgan and, and, and the other people. I took an opportunity to serve with them when they did the Operation Santa drive-through a couple weeks, week or so ago, so, yeah, I'll enjoy that, I think. Thank you. Mr. Chairman? I wonder why it is that Nevada Works is being avoided? Maybe Mr. Gardner can tell us.
I don't know. I have enough works, so, thank you.
Uh, you know, you, what happens is you get spread so thin and even though these entities, they, sometimes they meet once a month or every quarter. It's, it's a lot to keep up with. The Nevada Tahoe Conservation District, it used to be covered by Nelson. I don't know what all that entails.
We had some couple of comments on that at the beginning of the meeting. I know they do a lot of conservation work up at the lake. And I know Commissioner Nelson had fairly regular meetings with them.
Commissioner Tarkanian, you want to try to take that one on?
If the rest of the commissioners feel that would be worthwhile, sure.
Go for it.
Uh, Nevada Works, hmm, is that?
Mr. Walt, how about you there?
Okay, we've got what, one, two left? I don't know what Nevada Works does. Is that an NGO organization, something of that nature?
Um, yeah, I don't know that much about Nevada Works. Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act.
Okay, you, you can put me on that one.
It appears they only have three meetings a year, February, June, and October, according to the notes here that you provided us, Mr. Cates.
State Land Use Planning Advisory Council.
That is a statewide council that advises the Department of State Lands. Um, the existing membership lapsed. We had a former commissioner that was on that. Um, I know Commissioner Rice's list is an alternate, alternate.
Commissioner Gardner, you want to, you want to get on that one?
Um, just nervous that my workload already is fairly heavy, so if we can find somebody else to do that, I, I would.
Well, that's, how often do they re?
Well, that's what I was looking at also.
I also reached out to them, or they reached out to me actually, about an appointment. And it does not have to be a commissioner. So if you did not want to appoint a commissioner, we could bump this to a future agenda and, and you could appoint somebody else, like staff or somebody, if you so choose.
Let's do that, that's until we find out more about it. And so a civilian could be appointed to that, a member of the community. Is that my understanding?
Yes.
Okay. All right. All right, let's, let's table that. Well, it looks like we've got everybody doing something here.
So, a few alternates we haven't appointed yet.
Yeah, that's.
I'll be, I'll be an alternate on the Carson Valley Visitors Authority.
I'll be an alternate on Audit, Campo.
Well, there, the, the alternates are only on some committees where their bylaw calls for it.
Okay.
Need an alternate in the incumbent column, then we'd want a 21.
Are, so, are we good to go with this? Can we make this an action item now?
We need a, do we need an alternate on the NACO?
If nobody wants that, I'll take that.
Oh, I see where, okay.
Nevada Works has an alternate as well.
Go ahead, put me in as alternate.
That's Noah Sad, okay.
Then I think the only thing left is Tahoe Douglas Visitors Authority. We have both Commissioner Rice and Commissioner Noah Sad desiring to be on that.
How about 23? There's an alternate for there?
Oh, yes, sorry, I missed that one.
You can, you can put Angles in.
Okay.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I would really like to retain my position on TDVA. I've been working with them for a couple of years and I'm on several commissions with most of the people on that board and I have a good working relationship with them.
Aren't, aren't you there, Wes?
Well, it says Rice Orr.
Is that, is that number 16?
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-six.
I, I don't have a problem with that.
Thank you, sir.
So we'll, we'll take Noah Sad off and you got a lot to do, Wes.
Yeah, I, I, I've been running this, this circle for a couple of years now. I finally have it down to a science.
Okay. Any other considerations?
If, if, if you, if you're just going to table the State Land Use Planning, I can take that one if you want to finish that one off.
Yeah, we, we don't know much about it.
Okay, well, we can table and talk about it later, but I'll take it if we, if we need to.
Okay, well, let's go ahead and we'll put Commissioner Tarkanian in there. And I don't know where all, that one's going to go.
That one does have an alternate.
Mr. Chair? Oh, okay, I'll, I'll go ahead and take on the alternate position there then. So, so where, where Danny's backing me up on some, I'll back up him on some.
Okay.
You good with that, you, you good with that, Mr. Tarkanian?
Absolutely.
Okay.
All right, we, go ahead.
Well, I suppose we need to make a motion on this, Mr. Cates, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, um, so, I, I will at this time then, Mark Gardner, uh, I'll make a motion that this board accept the appointments as they're currently laid out on the spreadsheet with the alternates as well. Uh, understanding that at any time, if a commissioner feels like they need to, they're overwhelmed and they need to come back to us. And for a change in that, we will entertain that at that time.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and a second. Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, the motion carries. We're done.
Yay, moving right along. Patrick's happy.
I'm doing pretty good here.
You have a bottle of champagne there, Patrick, is that what you're?
Well, there was a lot of moving parts, I think.
Yeah, there is. Did that go as quickly as you expected, Mr. Cates?
No, much quicker.
Mr. Booth, you're going to be up next and, you know, half the hour's coming up, so keep that in mind.
I, I've heard that of you, Mr. Mr. Chairman, so.
All right. Presentation only. Presentation by the Douglas County Community Development Staff on Land Use Planning, Development Applications and the role of the Douglas County Community Development Staff, the Planning Commission, and the Board of County Commissioners in regard to this. And Mr. Booth, you have the floor.
Thank you, Commissioner Ingles, Chairman Ingles. Uh, congratulations to the newly elected commissioners. Uh, nice to meet you. I'm Sam Booth, the County Planning Manager. Uh, with me this afternoon is our Community Development Director, Tom Delaire. Um, and we appreciate the opportunity and chance to speak to you guys today to do just a very high-level overview of what I, what I label in the presentation here, Planning 101, uh, but not only touching on land use planning, uh, and, but also some of the processes of community development staff and some of the other boards and commissions that are involved in, in, in that process. Uh, so, Chairman Ingles, I, I think the agenda says 20 minutes for this presentation, uh, but I know you guys have had a long day and I can be brief. Uh, and I've got a chance at the end for any questions you guys may have of me. So with that being said, I like to start off this presentation. And let me know, can you see the, see the screen there here? Okay, um, so with just a few quotes from the American Planning Association and the Institute for Local Government on essentially what is, what is planning or why is planning important to us. Um, and the first being that the goal of planning is to maximize health, safety, and economic well-being of residents in ways that reflect the unique needs, desires, and culture of those who live and work within the community. Uh, and I think another good one that applies to, to planning and why it's important to us would be that cities and counties need to consider what can and should happen to a community, um, how it should grow and change, and what it should offer residents maybe 10, 15, or even 20 years into the future. Uh, and finally, that planning is to establish goals and. Uh, and finally, that planning is, uh, to establish goals and policies for directing and managing the future growth and development of a community or region. So the next slide I have here is just a, a description of, you know, again, going further into why are we doing this, uh, what is land use planning? Uh, how does it, uh, help us improve, uh, our community, uh, or, or, uh, Douglas County? And, and, and I believe that proper planning helps to develop a common vision, uh, to create a sense of place, um, to protect and enhance, uh, property values, um, safeguard, uh, public health and safety, um, and proper planning, uh, helps to provide, um, public facilities and infrastructure, um, and to plan ahead for, for those, uh, utilities in, in infrastructure. Um, uh, it also helps to improve economic development, uh, and protect the environment, conserve natural resources, uh, and really to set clear expectations for everybody that's in, involved in the process. Uh, landowners, uh, the, uh, boards, uh, and commissions, uh, reviewing applications, county staff, uh, everybody that's involved in the process. Uh, so as, as part of any land use planning in Nevada, uh, you may have, uh, heard of and, um, uh, much, uh, talk in Douglas County about our, our county master plan. And we're happy to announce that, um, we have a current, uh, uh, the updated twenty-twenty Douglas County Master Plan that was recently approved. Um, it has been in the works for, for the past four years, and so we're happy to, to have an effective, um, an updated, uh, master plan. Uh, but, but really, what is that master plan? Um, first of all, it's required by NRS, uh, to be created when a planning commission has been established within a county. And of course, we do have a planning commission, so we are required to have a master plan. Uh, it's an official public document that's first prepared and adopted by the planning commission, and then adopted by the, uh, governing body. Uh, it is a long-term general plan for the physical development of the county, uh, typically looking, you know, ten to twenty years into the future. Uh, it identifies current issues and needs in the community, um, and then it sets, uh, uh, goals and, and we try to keep those goals, uh, fairly general and to summarize them, uh, and not have too many detailed regulations within, within the master plan, uh, while those will be, uh, within your, uh, county development code. Uh, and it does also include actions to achieve those goals. So how do we implement the master plan? Uh, typically, first and foremost, we do that, uh, through our development code, uh, and through, uh, the, the process of zoning land, uh, for, for uses. Uh, and, and just a history on that, you know, uh, zoning was historically established as the separation of a community into zones that regulate land uses and the intensity of the development that can occur in those land uses. Uh, you, you know, the goal of zoning is to assure that neighboring land uses are compatible, uh, and appropriate, uh, to be a, adjacent to each other. In Douglas County Code, uh, Title Twenty is our consolidated development code that regulates, uh, land uses, uh, development. And before approving or denying a project, local officials, uh, the county commission must determine whether or not the project complies with those provisions of Title Twenty. Uh, the, uh, Title Twenty, the development code, it includes, uh, everything from land use or, uh, zoning and land division regulations, uh, floodplain management regulations, public facilities improvement standards, uh, our TDR program, uh, in, in its requirements are described in Title Twenty. Uh, our growth management ordinance is within Title Twenty, uh, as well as just, uh, y- your day-to-day review procedures, uh, for staff and, and various applications, uh, and the definitions of those types of applications or, or processes. Uh, and, and the same to be said for building a- as well as engineering, uh, uh, processes and permits. So, uh, who does what within the planning process? Um, first of all, uh, community development department staff, um, is responsible for the day-to-day implementation of the master plan and Title Twenty and overseeing those two documents. Uh, community development staff, uh, reviews development applications against the master plan, uh, goals and policies and against the, uh, county's development code. Um, of course, we're responsible for providing, uh, good customer service to the public. Uh, and as part of that, we are tracking and issuing building and zoning permits. Uh, we're reviewing plans, uh, construction plans, uh, zoning plans, uh, and we're responding to just general development, uh, questions. Um, uh, additionally, staff is preparing, uh, public notice, uh, for hearings, uh, providing technical advice to the planning commission as well as to the board of county commissioners. Uh, and, uh, staff does administratively hear minor development applications, uh, as allowed by code. Uh, so this is an additional slide, uh, that I, I noticed I left out of your packet, uh, and I'll provide this, uh, to the clerk after the meeting. Uh, but it was an important one, um, that was missing from the pa- the, the packet, which is what's the role of the advisory bodies within the county? Um, and, and those are the Town of Genoa, uh, the Town of Minden, and the Town of Gardinerville. Uh, so per Douglas County Code twenty-point-oh-eight, all zoning permits, tentative parcel maps and subdivision maps within town boundaries must be reviewed by the town prior to final action. Uh, and there are some exceptions for signed permits or temporary, uh, permits, uh, and surveys, uh, smaller items like that. Uh, but no final action should be taken until a formal written recommendation has been received by the director, uh, or by the hearing body. Um, and then the code does, does say that, uh, failure of an advisory body to make a recommendation, uh, can't deprive the applicant of their statutory rights. Uh, those being, uh, that there are timelines set by NRS for some of these items to be heard by the various boards and commissions. Um, actions by an advisory body like the towns are evidence to be considered by the final decision maker. Um, and, uh, by, uh, evidence for staff to consider, uh, the planning commission, uh, as well as the board of county commissioners. Um, and they add to the record that's generated, uh, by the advisory body. Uh, so we also have the planning commission, uh, as part of the planning process. Uh, I believe on your meeting, uh, later this week on Thursday, you'll be appointing a, a member, uh, to the planning commission and making one of those appointments. Uh, the planning commission is, uh, consists of seven members appointed by the Board of County Commissioners. Uh, they are citizen members, uh, they serve a four-year term. Um, uh, the planning commission, as I said earlier, is required by NRS, um, and it's required to be established in a county with a population over forty-five thousand. Uh, so we are required to have a planning commission. Uh, the planning commission reviews amendments to the master plan, zoning map and text, uh, amendments, uh, subdivision maps, plan unit developments, and on all of these items, they are a recommending body, just as the towns are, uh, to the board of county commissioners. So they don't have the final say. Uh, but the planning commission does, is the final decision maker for special use permits and, uh, variance requests. An exception to that would be if a variance, uh, or a special use permit is associated with one of those other items I listed, uh, a subdivision map potentially or rezoning request, uh, that if those items go on to the board of county commissioners, then the variance, uh, goes with that to, to the board of county commissioners. Uh, and, and finally, the planning commission, they hold their, uh, public hearings the second Tuesday of each month. Um, so, uh, the final decision maker, uh, in the process is the board of county commissioners yourselves. Um, and the, the county commission is evaluating recommendations from the planning commission, uh, from county staff analysis, uh, public input, uh, the towns' recommendations, if there, it's an item that's within the towns, as we said. Uh, and is the final decision maker on those items that we listed, master plan amendments, zoning map amendments, subdivision maps. Uh, and on those items where the planning commission is the final decision maker, the board of county commissioners, uh, it can hear appeals of those special use permits or variances from the planning commission. So, uh, I have just a, a brief, uh, kind of flow chart here of, of typical application and how it proceeds through the, uh, department's, uh, review process. Typically, an application is, is gonna start with, um, a meeting, a pre-application meeting, uh, that we encourage the public, uh, to, uh, hold with county staff. Um, and, and in doing that, what they're gonna do is before they file fees, uh, submit documents, um, and, and go through the process of actually filing that application, we encourage, uh, an applicant to sit down with the staff to just discuss, uh, you know, the ability to file that application on a potential piece of property, uh, what some of the pitfalls may be, um, what concerns staff may have ahead of time, uh, s- some of those things. Um, because we like to try to work out some of the kinks of a project if we can before an application is ever, uh, submitted, uh, before an applicant or a property owner has ever spent money, um, doing design work, um, or, uh, reviewing the potential development for a property, uh, and, and to have those conversations as early as we can in the process. Uh, so typically, a pre-application meeting is held first, uh, and after that, then potentially, an application may be submitted to community development. Um, once we receive that application, staff has, uh, by, by county code, uh, three days to review that application, uh, and determine its completeness. Uh, basically, at that time, we're reviewing whether or not, uh, the items on our checklist, uh, are, are submitted along with the application. Uh, if, uh, if the applicant actually has the ability to apply for that on the, on the land, does the, the development code allow them to do what they're applying for, uh, those kind of very high-level, uh, reviews we're doing in that first three days. And once we determine that the application is complete, uh, we're gonna distribute that file to, uh, each of the county departments, uh, the towns, schools, fire department, uh, as well as any state departments that may have a review in that process. Uh, send that out to them, uh, and make them aware of what type of application it is and when it's gonna be heard. Um, and then about a week or two, uh, after we distribute that file, we hold a projects meeting with each of those departments, uh, with county staff, uh, and outside departments or state, uh, departments as well as, uh, the applicant. Um, to, uh, first of all, we hold the projects meetings, uh, just with staff, uh, to come up with comments, concerns that we may have. Uh, and then we put those comments together in notes and send those out to the applicant. Um, and we may have a meeting subsequently after that to review those, uh, but, uh, uh, what we hope, uh, that happens after that is that the applicant addresses, uh, those concerns, uh, amends the application. Uh, and then after that's done, staff is gonna work on preparing a staff report for each of the advisory bodies, uh, and the board of county commissioners. Um, and in our staff report, uh, you will see, um, we'll either have recommended conditions for approval, uh, or we'll have the findings and justification for a denial, uh, within the staff report. Um, you know, it's gonna be laid out for you, uh, starting with a, a summary of what the applicant is applying for, uh, some background information about the site, maybe any history, things like that, uh, images and, and just descriptions of the zoning, uh, and surrounding land uses, those type of things, and then a description of the project and evaluation of the project, uh, and, and ending with a review of the findings of fact and those, uh, potentially proposed conditions, uh, on the project. So after all that's done, uh, if this is an application within the towns, the town would hold their, uh, town board meeting to ma- make a recommendation, and then the project would move forward to the planning commission, and they hold their public hearing. Uh, and the planning commission is typically, uh, except for those few items, making a recommendation to the board of commissioners. Uh, and of course, finally, uh, the county commission, uh, is going to hold a public hearing to affirm or deny the planning commission's decision. So I think I've, I've, I've gone over, uh, a few of these and I'll just, just, uh, kind of skim through these, but typical applications that we hear, uh, in, in any given year are amendments, uh, to the master plan maps or text, uh, zoning map amendments or zoning text amendments, which would be t- amendments to our county code. Uh, plan development overlays, uh, these are, uh, just another type of zoning, uh, layer, uh, that may have special standards or, or requirements um, in addition to the, uh, the standards and requirements of that zoning district. Uh, tentative parcel maps, which are four parcels or smaller, um, uh, these are heard by an administrative hearing panel. Uh, tentative subdivision maps are five parcels, uh, or more, uh, and these are heard by the planning commission and then heard ultimately, uh, for final approval by the board of county commissioners. Uh, and special use permits that I mentioned earlier, uh, which are heard by the planning commission. Uh, these are, uh, just special uses, as the name says, uh, which are, uh, can, generally compatible with the, the zoning of the property. Uh, but, but, uh, in county code, we've determined that we want, uh, just a little bit more review and the ability for the planning commission to hold a public hearing on that. Um, in, in the past year, I think, uh, we had a special use permit for the new mural, uh, in Gardinerville. Um, uh, and we also had a special use permit towards the beginning of the year for a brewery in Minden. Uh, uh, and, and the idea there being, I think, both of those items were within, uh, commercial zoning district, uh, where it seems appropriate for those type of uses, but the county's determined that we want just an additional layer of review there for the planning commission to hear the, uh, particulars of that. Uh, so ultimately, um, as I said, the staff report is, is going to end on, uh, the findings of fact and an evaluation of the findings of fact by staff and whether or not we believe the applicant, uh, has been able to meet those findings or is unable to meet those findings. Um, in Douglas County Code, uh, Title Twenty contains objective standards, that's these findings of fact, uh, that the commissioners must evaluate and apply the facts to, uh, during a meeting. And in order to approve or deny a request, the approving body must make a recommendation indicating whether a proposed, uh, a proposal meets the findings of fact. Um, and so, you know, why do we have these? Why are they included? Uh, first and foremost, uh, many of the findings are included in, in NRS, uh, some of them are, uh, particular to Douglas County Code. But in, in, uh, more, uh, general terms, they bring transparency, order, and predictability to the proceeding. Um, they allow the applicant and the public, uh, as well as the commissioners, uh, the ability to understand the factors that are gonna be considered with that case. Um, they provide a rational structure to guide the meetings. Um, and the burden is on the applicant to prove that the standards have been met. Uh, and staff, as I said, will provide an unbiased analysis of those findings in our staff report. Um, and comments made by the applicant, uh, the public, staff, and, and even the commissioners should relate back to those findings of fact. Um, and, and again, that's just going back to how it provides a rational structure for the review of that, you know, that potential application. Um, and of course, uh, the importance of the findings of fact is that, uh, if, if you're following the findings of fact, you're gonna reduce the chance of litigation. Um, and, and just, uh, would say that those are very important, uh, look for those in your staff report and, um, and I hope that, uh, uh, as, as we have conversations on applications in the future this year, um, if you have any questions, uh, but, you know, what a finding, uh, is really getting at, um, what the staff's analysis is there, uh, feel free to, uh, to ask those questions during the meeting. We'd, we'd love to give a description, um, uh, to you on that. So as I told you, Chairman Ingles, uh, I would try to be brief here, but that does wrap up my presentation. And again, I, I appreciate, uh, you gentlemen giving us the opportunity to just talk briefly about, uh, community developments, uh, processes and, uh, land use planning, uh, more generally.
Any members of the board have any questions? Mr. Gardner?
Yes, I do. Uh, thank you. Um, first of all, uh, I noticed that, uh, Mr. Taylor was part of this. Uh, Sam, are you there?
Um, yes, uh, Mr. Gardner, I am here.
Anyways, I, I just wanted to say I, I did, uh, watch almost every hour of the master plan process by the planning commission, and I want to compliment you on, on, uh, your, your marvelous, uh, process of, of directing them, uh, in, in that process. I was very, very impressed with your, your skills in that regard and how you seem to anticipate their questions that would come up in NRS and, and have that at the tip of your fingers when that question was actually asked, so that was very impressive, sir. Uh, so, uh, it's a pleasure to have you as a member of the, uh, District Attorney's Office. Uh, I had a couple of questions, uh, uh, for Sam. In, in regards to this, uh, you mentioned the, uh, special use permit, and, uh, that would normally stay with the planning commission if they came to a favorable position. Is that, is that correct?
Yes, uh, Commissioner, that, that's correct. Um, uh, it, the planning commission has the final determination on a special use permit. Um, and, uh, and of course, that, that decision can be appealed, uh, to the county commissioners.
So if they deny a special use permit, then the applicants can still, uh, appeal that to the board of commissioners and then it comes to the board of commissioners. Is that correct?
That's correct. Yes.
Okay, I just, I just wanted to make sure I understood that. Um, the, uh, you mentioned the advisory boards, uh, Gardinerville, uh, and Minden, and- The, you mentioned the advisory boards, Gardinerville and Minden and the town of Genoa. What's troubling there, and I appreciate that, but what's troubling there is the Gardinerville Rancho's composes, anyways, makes up about 20% of our citizens in this county, and yet it doesn't appear, and it's also the area of the largest receiving area within our county, yet they don't seem to be having an advisory position that I can see in regards to issues that affect, directly affect them. Is there a method of rectifying that, or what would be your ideas and views on that?
Well, I think, appreciate the question, Commissioner Gardner, this is Sam Booth again. I think, first of all, I would just state that I think, at least how I have laid it out in the presentation, is just reflecting county code and NRS describing the towns as advisory bodies, and I would defer to Sam Taylor for maybe a little more of a description on why that is or what the definition is there. But I would go just a little bit further into your question about the GIDs, Gardinerville Rancho's, of course, being one of the largest ones, but, you know, Indian Hills GID as well, being a very large portion of the county, TRE, as you know, in the southern portion of the county. When we have an application within the GID's boundaries, oftentimes the GIDs are serving that project with water and sewer utilities, maybe streets that they're maintaining, or sanitary sewer lines, stormwater, those type of things. And so oftentimes, those applications are going to be heard on whether or not they are going to be able to serve a project, and will issue or will serve, but then they'll also review the project themselves and issue an approval or denial recommendation to county staff, and many times it would have conditions attached to it or those type of things. So while we don't call them out, I think the code doesn't call them out exactly as advisory bodies, it still would be evidence that we would include in the packet and forward to the planning commission and to the county commissioners if the town, or, excuse me, if the GIDs held a meeting and made a determination on an application.
Thank you, I appreciate that. On Monday, we had new Board of Commissioners training with not only HR and IT, but we also had District Attorney Mark Jackson come in and talked to us about our processes and how important it was to have the proper wording on record, on record. And he kind of, for lack of a better term, somewhat beat that into our heads. Couple of years ago, I know Chairman Penzel asked that certainly the planning department, when they were bringing forward motions, that we have two motions that are brought before the board, one to approve and one to deny, so that the Board of Commissioners would have the proper wording to go before the District Attorney for the processes. And although it seemed to happen for maybe a couple of meetings that I'm familiar with, we seem to have that process, has appeared to have gone by the wayside. Could, could we try to re-implement that? I don't know how Mr., the chairman, Mr. Ingles feels about that, but I know that I think I would like to see both, both the proper motion to approve and the proper motion to possibly deny should we go in that direction, so that it's on the record in a correct manner. So I don't know how you feel about that, Mr. Ingles.
I think you have a valid point, and if we can have an informal consensus to agree to that, I don't think we need to get real formal. That's something that, where it's appropriate, we can, we can bring it up.
Thank you. Otherwise, I know we have just, I think, one more item, so I don't have any other questions.
Anybody else have any comments, questions?
No, sir.
Yes, I just wanted to thank Commissioner Gardner for his kind words. Thank you.
Mr. Booth, that's a good presentation. It's concise and simple. There's always so many questions in regard to land use and planning and things, and throwing this out to the board, would it be appropriate, or can we perhaps put that up on the webpage for the community at large to review?
Yeah, yes, Chairman Ingles, I can, I think we can definitely do that, yes.
Your mission, then. It's, a lot of questions. All right, thank you. Any more questions, ideas? Okay, well, I guess we're done, Mr. Booth. That was well done and concise, and didn't go too far in a half hour, so we're doing The next item, which will be Mr. Cates, for possible action. Discussion by each of the county commissioners on the individual goals and priorities for Douglas County. I'd like to intervene a little bit here, and Commissioner Rice is now senior, whether he likes it or not. If you would like to present your visions first, please feel free, we would accommodate you, and then we'll pick up everybody else. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate that. It's helped, helped being the old guy. One of the main things that I would like to accomplish in the next year or two is the resolution of the VHR problem. Jennifer and her task force did a marvelous job of putting a package together, and I would like to see that moved through the, moved through the board as rapidly as possible. At your insistence, they now have badges, and we have hired extra hands out there, and they have put together a program with, wrapped it up with a nice big red bow, that is going to be self-sustaining and will not cause the bulk of the taxpayers of Douglas County any, any further taxes or anything of that nature, and only those that will be involved in the program will be paying the fees involved. So I would like to resolve that, that I get more phone calls on VHRs than probably any other problem. And having lived right around the corner from the party house, I understand. But also, there's the other side of the corner, the people that own them and trying to do a good job, and they're being thrown under the same bus as the ones that are not doing a good job. So I would like to put that to rest. And my other main thing that I would like to accomplish is the making the Tahoe Event Center a world-class building, and that will not cost the citizens, other than those that go up and use the facilities, a dime. And I think it's wonderful the way that that's occurred, the way that the county is not on the hook for anything. And it's my understanding it isn't, hasn't been published, well, it has been published, it was a great big, it wasn't a leak, it was a flood, that NHL are negotiating a contract to hold games at the event center after it's built, so that's, that's a big feather. So those are the two main things on my plate. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Rice. Commissioner Tarkanian, you want to be next?
Sure, that'd be great. First of all, I want to commend my predecessor, I think he did a wonderful job over his four years on the commission, with a lot of hard work and selfish acts. I had an opportunity to read some of the minutes from previous meetings, and I was really impressed with some of his well-reasoning positions, particularly with respect to the party houses. I really thought he laid that out really well, and I hope that I can fill his footsteps, he did a wonderful job. I think what we saw in this past election was there was a very divided community with the divided Board of Commissioners, and I hope that I can bring some type of cohesiveness together. You can never accomplish great things if you're divided, and everybody's going to have different opinions, we're not going to agree with each other, but we can do a very good job by working together and, and understanding and listening to each other's opinions. The other mandate that I saw through the election, which I hope to achieve, but it's going to be very, very difficult because of what it requires, is it's very clear in this community that the residents do not want significant growth, they want limited growth to keep the rural community the way it is. They don't want to raise taxes, and I certainly don't want to raise taxes, but at the same time, we have to provide the essential services necessary to make this a first-class community. So there has to be revenue coming into the state in other areas. And one of the main areas that can pick up the slack there is if we can become very pro-business and business-friendly, and encourage businesses to come in to our community and help them be successful, that could offset some of the loss of revenue from having a substantial increase in our population. And I also hope that, being a father of four young kids, and one of the main reasons we moved to this community was because of the wonderful features and environments they had out here, is to help maintain and maybe even improve some of the safety issues that are here in Douglas County. Every day I go through a walk in my neighborhood, we see so many other people walking, we see people riding their bikes, many on the foothills. I think we need to do a better job of making and maintaining bike lanes for people to ride their bikes, and safe places for people to walk as a family with their dogs. One of the things that I think is of a big concern or big need would be to make a walking path or a bike path on the road, Centerville Lane on the road that leads towards, from Drayton, Drayton where I'm at, to the community center and the park and a lot of the main shopping areas. There are a lot of young kids who'd love to go to those areas, but it's not safe for them to walk there. I know that'll be expensive, and we'll be short of resources, but we need to work, I'm trying to find, trying to make this community more friendly for young kids to be able to walk and ride their bikes. I know that the county commission doesn't oversee the school district financially, but part of the county commission's responsibility is to provide a safe and healthy environment for the communities. And just recently, I was involved, my family and I, with the hearing in front of the NIAA, which is the governing board of sports here in the state of Nevada, and at that hearing, I mean, there was a lot of evidence that showed that some of the children that attend Douglas High School, they're exposed to racist, anti-Semitic, homophobic, and vulgar sexual remarks, they were exposed to drugs and alcohol, even out of school, and classmates and friends were physically assaulted or threatened with physical assault, and one was even sexually assaulted at the school. Because of those type of things, I moved our family, our kids, out of Douglas High School to an area that we felt would be better for their upbringing. But there are a lot of people in this community that don't have the resources to do so, and they shouldn't be forced to move out just because the school environment isn't safe. You know, we had filed a bullying complaint with the Douglas High School about some of the things that happened to our older sister, and during that NIAA meeting recently, it became clear that the current superintendent and the former principal, who is now in charge of human resources, just swept the allegations under the rug. They refused to interview the vast majority of witnesses. I don't need to go on any further, but these type of things shouldn't happen. As I mentioned, there are many families that don't have the resources to take the kids out of the school district. Douglas High School is considered the top public school in the state, and they've got great people that work there, teachers, administrators, and some coaches, but it's got to be a safe place, and I hope that I can be a leading voice in that matter, too. I really look forward to working with all of you, I know there may be some reservations, at least with respect to how the campaigns went and what went on, but I really look forward to working with you and being an asset to this community. The people of Douglas County trust in me to represent them, and I want to do everything I can to make them proud. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Tarkanian, appreciate your comments. Commissioner Gardner, would you like to be next?
Sure, thank you. I actually, I did take the moment to type out some comments, so maybe I'm not as articulate as Mr. Tarkanian, and can't do it quite off the, off my sleeve. So anyways, thank you, Mr. Chairman Ingles. And as others have said, I would like to take this moment to thank the citizens of Douglas County for giving me the opportunity to represent them. During my campaign, I listened to the people, and I developed a vision for the upcoming term, should I be elected. As it turns out, my campaign theme, let's be safe, sound, and rural, fits well as a framework for conveying that vision. At the top of the list comes public safety. Our sheriff's department keeps our citizens safe, and Douglas County residents greatly appreciate the diligent efforts of our law enforcement officers and their sacrifice of their families, and we need to make sure that Sheriff Coverly and his department completely understand that. We pray for the safety of all of them and the swift recovery of recently wounded Sergeant John Linds and his family. I'm working with the Douglas County Sheriff's Mounted Clasi as a member of that to provide them some relief in that regard also. Something that I mentioned in the campaign, our 40-year-old JALEX Center, Judicial and Law Enforcement Complex, is, quite frankly, hopelessly crowded and inadequate. Constructed in 1980, the JALEX Center served 19,000 residents at that time. We now have nearly 50,000. The number of officers has grown, yet prior boards of county commissioners prioritize what I feel is their development trends instead of safety and security. We must work with the affected department heads to determine what is our best solution in regards to the JALEX Center. Regarding citizen safety, Douglas County also has one of the lowest ratios of officers to citizens in the state, to my understanding. With the impending housing boom approved by the previous board, I feel it's important to continue to keep the line of communication open between the DCSO leadership and us, the Board of Commissioners, regarding future planning for public safety and how it affects public safety. Regarding keeping our county sound financially, when new development comes into our community, it requires the county to provide the same resources that it provides to the existing residents. However, most new development requires more resources, resources over time than the newly assessed property taxes generate, hence the term, development never pays for itself. Most residents feel that more needs, more needs to be done to ensure that development isn't being subsidized by the rest of the taxpayers in our county. Moreover, restricting the spending of new property tax revenue generated within a specific area to that specific area rather than in countywide needs, as was attempted in the now dissolved redevelopment area, too, to me was unconscionable. I will not support this type of so-called redevelopment in the future. Last but far from least comes keeping our county rural, because we have 7,000 homes plus currently zoned for development with our county, and the exodus that our neighboring state has experienced will surely grow our county at nearly 30%. Over the last year, while our master plan was undergoing the required 20-year update, the previous board approved no less than four master plan amendments that encouraged more housing development. It is highly questionable whether these amendments were necessary and method required findings. To my mind, there was no demonstrated need for these amendments. I'm committed to keeping the master plan, protecting the master plan, and its original call for keeping Douglas- I'm committed to keeping the master plan, protecting the master plan and its original call for keeping Douglas County rural. These amendments favored the development community over the need for new schools, public safety needs, the relief of increasing traffic congestion on our two main arteries, 395 and 88. While our small business community depends on customers, traffic congestion hurts their ability to attract them, particularly along that corridor 395. The county, in my opinion, has done a poor job supporting its business community regarding this issue. In fact, the prior board obligated the taxpayers to finance a large part of the proposed Mahler Parkway, which I really feel will do little to relieve traffic congestion, but instead provide access to out-of-control residential growth, such as the nearly 2,500 homes that we've approved for park ranch holdings to build along that route. The prior board's generosity to the development community is already straining our most precious commodity, water, water, water and quality water. Communities, including the Garden of Old Ranchos, Ruins Rock and others, are experiencing water quality issues. We must look to requiring that the transfer of development rights, and I'll repeat that. We must require, we must look to requiring that the transfer of development rights, which are required in receiving areas, must be acquired from the same watershed as the intended development. Did you hear that? Requiring that the transfer of development rights, which are required in receiving areas, must be acquired from the same watershed area. I think that's important. I support putting a stop to the rolling over unallocated building permits from year to year. I also support restricting the drawdown of the current bank to ensure we do not have another boom or bust housing boom experience that this county has previously experienced. That was the original intent of the Sustainable Growth Initiative, which I support. These are priorities that I feel are critical in fulfilling the desires of this county to stay rural. During my campaign, I indicated, as issues come before us, I would put them through a three-way test. Number one, does it make sense in my head? Number two, does it feel good in my gut? Number three, am I staying true to my core beliefs that I hold in my heart? I intend to do that, just that going forward. And I look forward to hearing from the public and having their comments before each and every item. And will attempt every possibly, every time I possibly can to listen to their comments before making my mind up on a particular issue. Ladies and gentlemen of Douglas County, I'll work hard to ensure you, the citizens of this county, have the opportunity to re-involve yourselves with the government of our county through direct communications while remaining COVID-free and remaining COVID-safe, I'm sorry, while remaining COVID-safe. And I ask and invite all members of the public and county staff to feel free to contact me at any time. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your indulgence, Sheriff.
Thank you, Commissioner Gardner. Your comments are well taken. Next would be Vice Chair, Commissioner Noasad. Do you care to present your vision for the county?
Yes, I will. My vision for Douglas County for 2021 through 2025. Several things impelled me toward the race for Commissioner. Primary among them was the issue of redevelopment area two at the lake. But thanks to an army of signature collectors and voters, that question went to the citizens of Douglas County and they voted to dissolve RDA two. As a candidate, I offered an eight plank platform. The first plank was to dissolve RDA two. With that done, my remaining seven planks now constitute my vision statement for the B OCC and Douglas County, and they are control aquifer depletion, control new growth, institute zero-based budgeting, control variances to county code, control master plan amendments. Any tax and fee increase will go to a vote of the people. And lastly, maintain roads. With respect to aquifer depletion, this should be the control on all development. Our community's continued existence depends on a sustainable source of water. The Carson Valley was blessed to have just such a source. However, as we began uncontrolled growth, the drain placed on the aquifer increased with every new house that was built. Confound things, Mother Nature has been stingy with her supply of water to the Carson Valley, especially in recent years. B OCC should consider the state of the aquifer and do two things. One, get an up-to-date study of our water situation, which should include the actual draw on our aquifer as well as the recharge rate. And secondly, place a moratorium on the issuance of building permits and future development plans until such time as the water and end-up traffic studies are concluded. In controlling new growth, controlling new growth is an issue that has been a long history with previous boards that approved any requests that came along despite the intention of the master plan to keep Douglas County rural in nature. There are questions that should be asked when the builder seeks permits to build houses, including describe to the citizens of Douglas County what effects there are on the water supply as well as the infrastructure. Institute zero-based budgeting. Budgets which have previously been well thought out with a determination made as to how much revenue was needed to accomplish the mission statement for each department have served the people well. However, as time passed, the practice of starting a zero, starting at zero and building a budget from the ground up has fallen by the wayside in favor of expediencing. I will introduce the zero-based budget requirement to better understand and control how our revenue streams allocated and spent. Control variances to the county code. Anytime a developer has requested a variance in the Douglas County Consolidated Development Code, it was requested so the developer could extract more profit from the land he was developing. But questions were never pressed as to why the variance was needed and more importantly, what was in it for the residents of Douglas County. If a variance allowed the developer to add one more house to the Carson Valley, that's one less area through which rainfall could reach the aquifer. Control master plan amendments. The master plan is developed by the Douglas County Planning Commission and is updated on a five-year basis. It is the vision of what our county would come to look like over the next five years. As such, one could see that it's not, that it is not to be changed anytime a developer concludes the plan inhibits his plan for profit. I support the view that the master plan should not be easily changed and should continue to support the theme of keeping Douglas County rural in nature. Tax increases on the ballot, this power should be removed from the B OCC and put before the citizens of Douglas County. In the past, increases in taxes were easily passed by a majority of the board members without consideration of the people of Douglas County. That power should be shifted to the citizens since the B OCC failed to recognize that they were there to represent those citizens. Therefore, referendums on tax and fee increases will be in the people's hands. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Well, in conclusion, we residents of Douglas County are all immigrants escaping government tyranny. Whether you were one of the original settlers escaping Europe or a recent immigrant escaping the tyranny of California government, we all settled here in Douglas County. We all have developed a common appreciation for the magnificent beauty our county provides us. Unfortunately, as of late, our county has been exposed to evil. In the past five years, two ladies who were residents of the Garden of Old Ranchos were shot at point-blank range by an individual who was morally evil. Approximately two years ago, Douglas County Sheriff Sergeant Miller got into a point-blank gunfight with a criminal and took rounds to the hand. Recently, Douglas County Sheriff Sergeant Lins got into a gunfight with a criminal and was shot in the neck. Without prejudicing these cases, all I can say is that there is evil lurking among us. I want to make it perfectly clear that I stand shoulder to shoulder with Sheriff Coverley and the men and women of the sheriff's department, the district attorney's office, who will prosecute these people, and the judges and staff at the East Fork Courts. These are the people that stand between us and tyranny of evil and complete chaos. The one common thread this commissioner has learned with, with the folks living here is that they have the county of Douglas and they want to maintain its rural character. We cannot have it both ways, massive development or rural. The congestion on our road, local roads is now out of control. Our supermarkets, our local medical facilities are all stretched to the breaking point. We have been hearing bogus solutions from shallow men whose proclivity is that we want to keep the area rural, but their actions dictate otherwise. For months, we have been subjected to self-isolation because of COVID. And our board meetings have been restricted to Zoom that allow limited public interface to discuss county topics. It is very important that you vote for the commissioners who are men of virtue and represent your values. If they do not represent your values, then vote them out and try the next person as your commissioner. In big cities, you cannot do this, but in our county, you can, you can talk with your neighbors and/or directly with your commissioner candidates. Two years ago, I wrote a triacy about bringing movie production companies to our area. They had been here before, but over the years, it seemed that they had forgotten about the majestic of our area, it would be Hollywood. The Northern Nevada Development Agency picked up on this and there is now a full court press to make Hollywood aware of Northern Nevada, including our county. It seems to be working. As there was a production company in Mendon this last summer, there are now other inquiries coming in about doing productions here. This is a huge financial potential for this area, lodging, catering, tourism, and it does not have to have a negative impact on our environment. Douglas County is like a big backlog. One of the wonders we have in our county is Lake Tahoe. The casinos, the skiing, the breathtaking beauty of the area is unsurpassed to anywhere in the world. What we have is the Monaco of the United States at South Shore. This geographical setting can be capitalized on as there is no other place on earth like it. Edgewood Inns have done a marvelous job in attracting top names for their golf tournament. It would be beneficial to have the other casinos learn from Edgewood instead of playing Monopoly with their casinos and attract poker tournaments and things of that nature that are presented on a national basis. Vacation home rentals at the lake have gotten out of control due to the lack of code enforcement. This is about to end. A completely revamped Office of Code Enforcement is in the process of being established. This is different from law enforcement. The new code enforcement officers working the streets will now be more the streets with more in their way. They will carry badges, receive support of the county. No VHRs will be allowed in the valley zoning for single-family residents. This means, it says, this means what it says. VHRs are clearly a commercial endeavor and not a single-family resident. Over 40% of the VHR owners at the, at the lake are out-of-state owners. They should have more consideration for the full-time residents at the lake. We cannot control this, but we can vigorously enforce codes up at the lake for VHRs. Water in our aquifers, all the water, no matter where you live in Douglas County, except for the lake, this is from aquifers. This is a precious commodity in Nevada. Nevada is the driest state in the nation. It cannot be argued that the amount of water in our aquifers is finite. Mendon is pumping 1 million gallons of water per day to Carson City. That's 365 million gallons a year. We need to learn about what is replacing this huge drawdown from the aquifer. A USGS study is, needs to be conducted regarding aquifer water in our Carson Valley. Although water was mentioned in the master plan, it needs to become a major component of the master plan. State and federal agencies need to provide in-depth studies of our aquifers. Development in the Carson Valley is overwhelming our roads, water systems and has been running amok with hodgepodge of developments. In this year's master plan architectural oversight, a component was introduced. The county's Title 20 needs in a comprehensive review of the Carson Valley and Lake Tahoe area needs to be done. And it's interesting, Lake Tahoe, their codes are completely different than those down here in the valley. Administratively, the county needs to continue with financial austerity. Look for ways to control and cut unnecessary expenses. If items are not in the budget as expenses, they do not, we do not spend the money. Commissioners have a fiduciary responsibility to hold the line on expenses that are not in the budget. Commissioners have a full plate ahead of them this, this year and it's time for happy hour. Thank you. So. Any closing public comments? There she is.
Yes, sir. Natalie Wood for the record. I have two and I can start playing them if you're ready.
All right.
Ellie Waller, W A L L E R. Please provide the public information on how to request agendas be mailed to their personal residence. To whom does the public contact for a mail agenda? I am asking the board to go above and beyond the very basic instructions for public comment and consider in-person meetings for COVID restrictions that allow public comment after each agenda item. I'd like the commissioners to provide detailed summaries of their meetings on their recently requested committees during public meetings with crucial background information in the Board of Commissioners packet. In the past, the public has not been made aware of information related to potential of spending taxpayer dollars. An example is Douglas County agreeing to adopt a road segment in Lake Tahoe. Build it, maintain it, et cetera, as part of the event center and Main Street management plan. By the way, the State Land Use Planning Advisory Council is the only governor-appointed council that has a county representative from each of Nevada's 17 counties as well as the Nevada Association of Counties. The council provides recommendations and expertise on land use and natural resources. Planning advises the State Land Use Planning Agency regarding the development of plans and statements of policy. Our last representative was Nancy McDermott. She, her key expired on 12/31/2020.
With the comments by Ellie Waller made earlier today, it has been the long-held procedure in Douglas County to allow public comment during discussion of each agenda, action, agenda item as it is considered. Recently, the board has only allowed public comment beginning and end of each meeting. While allowed by the NRS, this is generally inadequate and unsatisfactory. To only have a chance to comment prior to the staff and the applicant's presentation, prior to questions, prior to additional info not included in